Second meeting to order. First, we have Pastor Joe Brown from Goochlin Presbyterian Church will give us the invocation.
Would you pray with me? Oh, Lord Jesus, we thank you that you are the one we rely on. We pray for your continued well-being and prosperity over Goochlin County. That depends upon you, Jesus. We express sincere gratitude for the freedom to assemble here, for these dedicated supervisors who've answered the call to serve their neighbors and our community. So as this Board of Supervisors commences its duties, Holy Spirit, we ask that you illuminate their discussions, give them clarity of purpose, a steadfast commitment to finding common ground, the discernment needed to choose the wisest path forward for our residents. May their governance be characterized by honesty, impartiality, and a profound understanding of the varying needs across all districts. We pray particularly for sound judgment and strategic planning as they consider topics vital to our community. And, Lord Jesus, as we enter the season of Advent and Christmas, we ask for your sustaining presence over all members of our community, especially those who are facing personal difficulties, dealing with illness, loss, hardship. We pray especially that you would move us to care for those vulnerable to the coming winter and cold. May your love inspire our community to shelter and protect all who are without warmth and to ensure that no one suffers from hunger during this time. We offer this prayer in the pursuit of justice, peace, and the love of our community in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Very special. Thank you.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I just had the privilege and pleasure with three of my colleagues to attend an employee recognition luncheon. And what a great event that was. We celebrated employees who'd been with us five years on up to 30 years. And there were two individuals that had been with this county for 30 years. And if you think about that, which I did at the time, and said, you know, we're in a society now that's sort of changed. I remember my dad was with DuPont for 42 years. I don't think he ever considered leaving. And because now we're in a very mobile society. And I think it's rare to see 30 years of service in one employer. So we thank those dedicated employees who've been here and all that institutional knowledge they have and the good work they do. So it was very special for us. You did a good job, Dr. Rayly, awarding all those presentations, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey, and certainly was a special afternoon. Grateful to be able to serve alongside such dedicated professionals. Couple announcements I wanted to share for the benefit of the public today. Friday's a special day for our community. We have the annual Christmas tree lighting. It will take place this Friday on December the 5th, starting at 6:30 and lasting until about 8:30. And that's right over here at the open lot next to the roundabout. We'll present a check to the Christmas mother at the beginning of the tree lighting. And after that, the Goochlin High School Dance Group will perform. And at 7 o'clock PM, we have a special guest who will make his way down Sandy Hook Road. There'll also be some fun activities, games, some more's cocoa, and more. Hope you're able to join us for this special community event. It is a great opportunity for us to come together as one community with a special event here in Goochlin. Did you know that our IT team and our fire and rescue team migrated over 30 legacy Panasonic ToughBooks? And these ToughBooks cost about $5,000 in each. They migrated that technology from the ToughBooks to the Apple iPads, which cost $700 each. So this transition helped to improve performance and standardized our equipment across fire and rescue. And ultimately, this strategic abandonment saved our county taxpayers roughly $129,000. So tremendous thanks to our IT team and our fire and rescue leadership who made this strategic decision to save taxpayer dollars while at the same time improving the operations of our fire rescue team. Did you know that the Goochlin-Pauertan Community Services Board, and I see Toby in the audience somewhere here, so there's Toby. He is the leader of our team. Our Community Services Board served 417 Goochlin residents for services in their home, a community setting, at the school, or in an office. And this resulted in an engagement rate of 85%, which is industry-leading. A cancellation no-show rate of 15% surpasses industry norms of 20%, indicating high levels of client engagement and satisfaction with the services that they're receiving from our Community Services Board. So Toby, thank you for your leadership and the work of your team. I wanted to share with our public as well that certain citizens who are on Goochlin County's water system may be receiving a letter in the mail later this month to help us comply with federal regulations related to the types of pipes being used in residential properties. The federal government requires all public water utilities, including us, to identify the material of the water lines that service the homes. Goochlin County's Public Utilities has identified most of these lines in the county. However, there are some lines that are yet to be identified. We've conducted our own research, including reviews of building permits and construction documents, to get as much information as possible. But there are situations where we still need some more information. And citizens will be receiving a letter stating that their water line is a material that we still don't know based on our records. So residents who are listening, residents who may view this later, if you do receive a copy of this letter, we ask for your partnership and your assistance to self-identify your line material or to contact our Department of Public Utilities team, who can identify your line material for you. Information on how to identify the composition of your line material and contact information for our Department of Public Utilities team will be in that letter, or you can visit our website or contact our trustee team here at the County Administration Building. As always, give us a call at any time. We're happy to help you in any way. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good stuff. Do we have any requests to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Okay, seeing none. Now, next on the agenda is citizen comment period. I'll now open the citizen comment period. Would anyone like to come forward? Would anyone like to come forward and speak at this time about anything that's not listed on the agenda for later on?
Ms. Townsend, you want to give a comment? You're welcome to come forward.
Yeah, come on.
I think I was on the list. Hello.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Dr. Rayly and Mr. Winfrey and Mr. Christie, and Mr. Lyle and Mr. Vaters. I see that Neil Spoonhour isn't here. So my name is Renee Townsend, and I'm the Director for Goochlin-Pauertan Court Appointed Special Advocates. I'm going to stick to the script because I know I have only three minutes. I just want to begin by expressing our heartfelt gratitude for your steadfast support over the past two decades of our program. Thanks to your generosity, we are proud to be celebrating our 21st year of advocating for the best interests of children in the JDR court system who are identified as neglected and abused. Prior to my career as a CASA Director, you may know that I served as a K through 12 public school teacher, private school teacher, for 23 years. This experience reinforces my deep dedication to CASA's mission and community service for children. I fully believe in our work as a CASA program, which is to advocate for children who cannot speak for themselves. Since our founding in 2005, Goochlin County has contributed an $8,000 contribution to our program, which has been very invaluable. And that support is often, is also given to us as in-kind support, which is additional, as I have an office upstairs. And so, thank you for this. This consistent investment has been foundational to our growth and impact, and we are truly grateful. Over the past five years, our program has expanded significantly in both scope and scale. As you know, now we have two employees instead of one, and our budget has doubled in size as well. Today, our traditional funding sources, federal, state, and local grants, government grants, do cover about 60% of our operating needs. So the remainder must be raised through community partnership and private support. So as we continue to advocate for children in both Goochlin and Pauertan, we are also working to secure equitable support with Pauertan's local government as well. I do have some scheduled meetings with the Board of Supervisors there. That said, I respectfully ask the Board to consider increasing its annual contribution beyond the $8,000 level annually. That has remained unchanged since our inception as a program in 2005. Increase would help us meet the growing demands of our work and ensure that we can continue serving the most vulnerable members of our community with excellence and compassion. So with that said, I think my time is up, but we are committed to being good stewards of every dollar entrusted to us. And so, thank you again for your past support of our program and look forward to a future of CASA in Goochlin.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I will close the community comment section. Next, we have reports. Dr. Rayly?
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. So we do have several reports on the agenda. First this afternoon is the introduction of one of our new teammates. And so, as Mr. Winfrey said, we recognize many folks who have served this community admirably for many, many years. We hope that this next gentleman is a member of the team who'll be with us for quite some time. And so, we'll have Mr. Heller introduce him to us today.
Well, thank you, everybody, for allowing me to introduce our new employee coming off of our service awards, which we had earlier today. This is the opposite end of the transition for our newest employee to Goochlin County employee. His name is Tosh Thompson. He is our purchasing manager. So, Tosh, if you can join us up front. Thank you.
All right. So I will share for the benefit of the public. Mr. Thompson comes to us from the University of Virginia, where he has some pretty extensive experience and has helped on some construction projects. And on the first two weeks in the job, he helped to get the invitation for bids for Station 8 out the door. So that was posted publicly yesterday. So he just jumped right in, ready to roll, and just really glad that he's on our team. Next, Board members, we have a presentation of our fiscal year 2025 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And so, we have Mr. Mike Garber from the firm of PB Maers, who is here to provide some highlights of that for the public today.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, good afternoon. I'll start by saying that we did meet earlier today around 10:30, I believe, with the Audit and Finance Committee and went through the audit and our process and procedures and findings and things of that nature in great detail with that group. And so, since we've already done that once today, I will not do it to you again. I'll try to make it brief for this group. So overall, we'll start with the good stuff at the top. We've issued an unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion. So that's what you're looking for, for your financial statements. For those who aren't familiar with the document itself, it's about 200 pages long of information and data and footnotes. So there's a lot. There is a lot in that document. Sometimes we refer to it as a doorstop. Otherwise, it also helps you fall asleep maybe in the evenings as well. However, there really is a lot of good data in there. If you want to know how your year went, I would suggest reading the Management's Discussion and Analysis at the beginning. And if you want to see some great 10-year historical data, in your statistical section in the back, there are a lot of different tables that do that for you. Talks about your debt, debt per capita, revenue streams, expenditures, and kind of shows you where you've been over the last 10 years. For you, it's information, but you can draw your own conclusions from that information. So those two bookends of your report are, I think, a great place to turn if you're just looking for that type of data. We also issued a report on internal controls and compliance. This year, we did have a weakness that we reported in that document as well. So if you're curious about that, that is in the very last section of your financial statements. We did complete the audit, I think, timely. There are still some items that we will be submitting that are due to the state by December 15th. We will have those in on time as they are completed. And the last thing I will mention, for those of you who are familiar with the financials, the compliance section usually has a single audit, which is your federal dollars in that section. The Office of Management and Budget out of DC had not issued their compliance supplement for the 2025 audit year. So we were not able to finish that work for you all, as well as all of our clients. So everyone has been waiting for this document. It was finally released last week, so we will be finishing that up here in the next few weeks till a month to get that issued as well. With that, I don't have anything else I think I need to go over, but I know you've had a chance, hopefully, to look through it and some of our other reports. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Let me just say, I was at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting this morning and was very comfortable with the report and pleased to see such a clean report and so forth. There were some issues, but they were minor, in my opinion, and certainly have been corrected and not indicative of any systemic issues or anything, sort of one-off things, if you'll agree. Sure. So anyway, thank you all and thanks to the staff for a good report.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, I want to ask Philip Frazier to come to the podium. And a couple of months ago, he had announced that he was going to provide us with a report on that four-letter word, S-N-O-W. And it is certainly timely, given some of the cold temperatures that we're having and maybe what will happen on Friday. Who knows? But Philip, welcome. Looking forward to hearing your report about VDOT's preparedness.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate you guys having me. Thank you, Philip Frazier, resident engineer in Ashland. Do I just click?
No, I need to.
Oh, you got it. Okay, sorry. Now, in the meantime, I had Mark Harlow come up with me. He's sitting behind. So he will be supporting me in any kind of questions that you guys may have. So as I think you guys have heard me say before, the residency has a couple of different functions. You know, we support land use, we support project development, we support maintenance. Within the maintenance directorate is actually our snow response program. So Mark's team is really in charge of developing that snow plan across the entire residency. So what I thought would be really beneficial for you guys and for Goochlin as a whole is just to hear exactly what we do as an agency to get ready for snow, more specifically as a residency and down to the area headquarters level. So I'll start with just a couple of policy points. I know I'm going to read these verbatim, but just to give you guys an idea of what policies we're governed by. "The department shall plan for an attempt to promptly and efficiently treat and remove snow and ice from all highway systems or make them passable as soon as possible." Passable as soon as possible is what the, you know, sometimes it is snowing so hard that it's not reasonable to get roads clear. So we're going to do the best we can as quickly as we can. "This is considered an emergency activity and is intended to maintain roadway assets while ensuring the safety of the traveling public and year-round use of state highways without undue delays." At the end of the day, we want to keep people moving. That's our motto. Keep Virginia moving. We don't want that four-letter word to get in our way. So what are the different priority designations when we talk about roads? Priority one routes, those are our NHS or National Highway System-type roads, so interstate routes and certain primary roads that fall under the NHS system. So Broad Street Route 250 is one of those roads. A priority two route would be things that are medium-service, primary, and secondary routes, having a functional classification of a principal arterial, minor arterial, major collector, or minor collector. What does that mean? So Route 623, that's Ashland Road. Hockett Road is considered, I believe it's a major collector, but it falls into our priority two route designation. Same with Fairground Road. So priority three, that's when you start getting into your subdivision routes, some of those lower-volume secondaries that have, like I say, lower volume, under 1,000 vehicle trips per day. And it just becomes kind of that third, that tertiary priority for us as a department. Priority four routes, just anything else, the leftover. So if you've ever heard of a frontage road, a route that maybe services just one or two homes that were created, you know, had some type of land restriction based on the interstate being built, that would be kind of a priority four route. And other routes would include like dirt roads, gravel roads. Okay, continuing on level of service. Priority one, the idea is to be kept free of ice and snow so that the traffic can proceed in safety without severe delays, except during periods of heavy falling snow. So pretty much repeating what I said earlier. Priority two, be kept free of ice and snow or covered with abrasives so that traffic can proceed safely without severe delay. So what is an abrasive? An abrasive is a sand and salt mixture. Typically, it's 10 parts sand, one part salt. The idea is, we don't like to put salt on surface-treated roads. Those are those chip seal applications that we've talked about before. You start putting salt and other types of chemicals on those roads, and it legitimately blows them up. Gets into the subbase and it gets soft. And then, as you have vehicles traveling up and down, it pops and you have pothole issue. So that's why we put more so a sand and salt mixture. Really, the salt is specific to keeping it from freezing, keeping the sand in the back of a spreader from freezing. Priority three, be plowed or have the intersections and curve covered with abrasives as soon as possible. Again, we know that we're not always going to be able to get all of the roads clear before folks are trying to get back to work, get back to school, whatever it may be. So putting those abrasives down at some of those strategic locations can really shore up some of the safety issues that we may be concerned about. And then, priority four, be made passable, plowed and treated by appropriately-equipped vehicle as soon as possible. So basically, just the catch-all at the end. Just continuing the level of service. We do have, sometimes there's snow emergency routes that can be designated by a town or a county that can help us kind of decide where we're going to put that in the priority list for us, one through four. Abrasives, I already talked about those being applied to hills and curves and other strategic locations. I mentioned on hard-surface roadways, there's not that many in Goochlin anymore. But typically, we will not plow those until you have a substantial accumulation on the road because we don't want to rip the road up. And then, finally, snow and ice should be plowed and abrasives applied to restore travel. I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying to get these roads open as quickly as possible. So you won't hear me say that enough. Here's a mobilization guide. Really, what you need to understand on this page is there's six different mobilizations. The first one is anti-ice or pre-treatment, which is where we do our brine application. So that is that salt-water mixture that we put in preparation of a storm. What that does is it allows that initial bond between snow and pavement to be broken and prevent any types of freezing. So what this does is it tells us what the application rate is for that brining effort. In addition, you go down from mobilization level one through five. One being, that's really what we had basically for today. We did go into snow mode yesterday afternoon and last night into this morning, where we have skeleton crews, various, a small amount of staff that reports for any types of problematic areas that may pop up overnight, whether it's black ice or a quick blip of snow. Level two is really where we get into that full, still state forces. It's all our staff internally. But we have two sets of groups working 12-hour shifts around the clock. And at that point, we're expecting to get upwards of around, you know, maybe an inch of snow, some type of accumulation where spreading salt might be necessary. And if you carry that over all the way to the right side, you can actually see the application rate. All the way down to level three, I want to point out three. I'll skip two. Level three is where we turn on the plow truck monitors. So you can actually see, you can go to the VDOT website and actually see where trucks that have this type of equipment installed on their truck, where they actually are in real time. So what routes they've been to and things like that. Level three is typically where we're calling in our all-hand staff, too, where we're asking folks from the district office that don't typically work in maintenance to come to the area headquarters and support us in various types of roles. And then, level five is everybody and their brother is coming out to support us in snow removal. We might be looking at emergency contracts and things like that. Okay. So this right here is a picture of a brining operation. This is, our brine is made at 288 and 250. I have some pictures of that. But typically, what we're trying to do is before a storm, treat the roads about 24 hours prior. We do primaries and high-volume secondaries. Really, what we're focused on is roads that have asphalt pavement. Because if we start putting that type of chemical on secondary roads... Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. But when we start putting that application on secondary roads, we have issues. Not to mention, to do all of our secondary system, it may take an entire week. So we can typically get our primary system done in about 24 hours. So this is the brining operation. Those tanks are where we stockpile our brine. The two machines on the right, forget about the PortaJohn, but the gray machine looks like a dumpster. And the yellow machine are both brining. They're brine makers. So what we do is we take in raw salt. We drop it in, and then we add water, and it turns it into brine. I see you guys talking. I really do appreciate it. Kind of thought this might happen. So as far as timeline goes, we start snow very early in the season, in July. That's where we start doing our advertisement process for our snow vendors. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. So in July, that's when we start our advertisement process for our snow vendors. Because like I said, we do a lot of our own snow removal with state forces. But we obviously need to lean on our contracted services to help support us during some of those larger events. Then in August, what we do as a residency is we hold two informational meetings where we invite those contractors to come to us, and we answer questions about signup processes and things like that. But we're starting very early to engage them for their support. Then in September, that's where we're trying to make sure that all of our materials are squared away at our different shops, making sure that we have salt, we have brine, and we have sand. Then in October, we have a couple of different training sessions. We train our own internal staff about what the expectations are for them to respond to an event. We train that all-hand staff that comes from our district that's coming to support us. And then, we also do, we do training for our contractors, making sure that their equipment is squared away. We also perform our dry runs. We have to submit our snow plans to the district that submits it to the central office. But we also perform inspections of all of our equipment. That includes trucks, plows, spreaders, and other equipment that we use. And I have some pictures of that that I will show you in a second. In November, the actual inspections of... In November, those, the actual inspections of the hired equipment contractors, their equipment is inspected and verified that it's acceptable for use. We also, we're always thinking about how an ice storm might bring down trees and limbs, so we have to go ahead and get those contracts squared away. And then you see, there's a major gap between November and April, because that is our snow season. That is where the rubber meets the road and we're actually in action. But in April is where we shut everything down, clean up our equipment, and make sure that it's good for storage through the summer. So what is a dry run? This assures the availability and reliability of equipment and materials, ensures that we maintain familiarity with state forces and contract employees and their assignments in order to achieve the department's objective. It's an opportunity to check those chemical spreaders, plows, mechanical systems of dump trucks and tractors. Snow plans are in place and reviewed and approved. And then all of our operators that are going to be running this equipment have been properly trained. That doesn't mean just trained to, for the equipment, but also trained for their routes. It's imperative for those folks to not be called in at midnight to respond to an event and have never been down Broad Street. That's not where you want to teach them how to push snow or tell them where they are geographically. So the types of equipment, I've already mentioned some, dump trucks, spreaders, plows, loaders, graders, tractors, brine tanks. And then we're also looking at those material in our facilities. This is a picture of the Oilville headquarters, their dry run. They did a really good job of presenting their equipment. As you can tell, those are two gradealls that are holding the flag over their pickup trucks. And here's some of their equipment lined up with their plows attached. And you can see some of the equipment shop folks that are actually under the vehicles inspecting them. Those are mobile brine tanks that would slide into the back. That did not go backwards. There we go. That's backwards. It'll slide into the back of the dump truck, which you can't see in this picture, but it does the, a similar thing is those hired spreaders. So this is the resources that we have prepared for Sandy Hook and Haydensville, which is a sub of Sandy Hook. Two managers, two dispatchers, operators, and then a couple hired emergency drivers. You can see all of the equipment that they have assigned. Then you can see the equipment that they have for the hired equipment, which is those contractors that are supporting us. You'll see a big difference between what we have in Sandy Hook versus Oilville. And it's based on the type of road systems that we have, the lane miles and things like that. On the right, you can see actually our material quantities, brine, salt, abrasives, and just general sand. Similar for Oilville. So like I said, I think we had three hired dump trucks and six hired tractors for Sandy Have a greater quantity of, of resources for Oilville with 17 trucks, 11 hired tractors, and one loader. One thing that I want to mention, and this is my last slide right here, this is the total across Goochlin County. One thing I want to make clear is that, as a residency, we have the ability to shift resources wherever we need. So if there's ever a situation where we get absolutely demolished in Sandy Hook and, and Oilville is squared away, they don't have, for whatever reason, the line stopped right at the, at 522. We can always take resources from, from one area headquarters and shift them to another. And because our residency is so large geographically, we go down to Charles City, New Kent, it's not uncommon for us to actually be sending resources from Charles City and New Kent back up here to Goochlin because frankly, Goochlin experiences a little bit more snow on a regular basis than, than we do out in the East End. So that's always something that I, I want to make sure that you guys are aware of. We have other resources to make sure that we, we can keep up. One thing I didn't talk a lot about is our communication plan. Me, the way I want to, I want to conduct business is just give you guys, you know, general updates. I'll probably run that through county, county staff and then, and then directly to you, Dr. Rayly, if that's okay. Just if we are expecting to have, you know, 24-hour operations extended for a few days, we want to make you guys aware. We, we know that those are some of the things that you guys are considering for, you know, opening business operations as normal, school, things like that. So one thing that I haven't talked a little, too much about, but it's our communication with schools. We are piloting right now a templated version of how we're going to communicate regularly with Hanover County School System about when they're going to be doing their checks to make a decision on whether they're going to open up school or they're not. We want to make sure that whatever process we choose or we, we work with is going to be something that we can translate to other localities. So Hanover just so happens to be kind of the guinea pig, but I think that, you know, we've had some conversations with Rosie and the other folks at, at Goochlin County, you know, school transportation. We did a lot of back and forth, making phone calls last year when they were trying to make those decisions about whether school should open or should remain closed for another day. So, so we have that communication that's, that's happening. It's not as, it's not as process-driven as I want it to be. Right now, it's still picking up the phone, which is great. But in time, I want to make that a little bit more, you know, have a general process that anybody can step in and make sure that we're communicating appropriately. So with that, that's all I had. You know, I'd be happy to take any questions about our snow program and just our preparedness overall. And thank you so much for the water. That was, that was rough.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser, thank you very much. Just want to ask what I hope is a stupid question, but I just want to clarify. If I'm looking at that and seeing the classification that you have of the roads, I think, you know, like, let's say Route 250 is a good example. My interpretation is there are no, you know, the snow removal process knows no county lines. It, Route 250 is going to get cleared, given its designation within the VDOT system. Patterson's going to get cleared, you know, in a certain, whether it's just across the county line in Henrico or it's in Goochlin, it's an equal priority given the designations, correct?
That, that is correct. It is an equal prioritization. I will say though, you know, we're obviously not going beyond the Goochlin County line into Louisa. That's outside of our, our limits, but they have the same priorities as we do.
Okay, good.
They're in a line.
Just wanted to make that clarification.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, I appreciate the striping or the brine application. How long does that last? I mean, is that something you can do? Forty-eight hours in advance, 24? What's, what's the lead time on something like that? Not being a chemistry major.
Depends on the snow.
Well, so yeah, there's a couple of factors with brine. We're always looking about how a storm is going to start. Is it going to start as snow or is it going to start as a torrential downpour? If it starts as a downpour, we know it's going to start as rain and switch over eventually. Brine might not be the right, the right solution for that storm. However, we, we like to say that brine tends to be a cheap insurance, you know. When in doubt, put it down. It only takes us about a day to, to get it done, and it's really not that expensive. So it is a cheap insurance. But as far as, you know, if you got sunny days, if we could brine today, if it was completely sunny and it'd probably still be there on Friday, that wouldn't be an issue. It's not going to blow away or anything like that. And, and quite frankly, we often see a lot of residual salt after a storm, especially on the interstate. So if you're ever riding down, you know, a week after you have a large snowstorm where we put a lot of chemicals down, you might still see some of that, that white salt coming back off the road. So to answer your question, depends on the weather. If you get rain, it's probably going to wash away. If you don't, it'll probably stay there for a while.
If they haven't done the dry run, it might not be applicable. But are you all still looking for service providers in any way? And where would they go if they have a CDL designation or any service for people looking for jobs during the snow season, things of that nature?
It's a great question. You want to hit that one?
Yeah, yeah. Um, every, I'm sorry. Every year, we put out advertisement for CDL drivers, non-CDL drivers, and hired equipment contracts. Our hired, hired equipment contracts have, they're kind of ended up now. We've kind of got our plan in place. There, there is, you can go to the VDOT website, and there is an application that you can put in and, and if you want to go to a different county, a different residency. So, so they're still looking for trucks in Richmond District. We are still looking for CDL drivers for our equipment. We have VD, VDOT equipment that is setting that we, because we split shifts. So we want to, we want all of our trucks on the road that we can actually get out there. So you'll see message boards that are set up, and there's an advertisement and a number where they can call our residency office, and we can get them set up to apply to, if there's an application that they have to go through as well to come drive our trucks as well.
So, so given, given the need that I'm hearing, a notice through our various channels with the county, looking for CDL drivers, looking for things you need would be helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll work on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just have to ask.
This is good discussion.
I see these signs in the VDOT right-of-way advertising for CDL drivers for snow removal. Are those your signs?
The message boards?
No, I'm talking about the little yard signy things.
What is the rate? Is it $60?
I didn't pay that question.
They're not ours.
I'm just, we, we are working through right-of-way signage issues. I just was curious whether you all had, I don't know, a priori rights to put signs up in the right-of-way. Just
Any update on the Divergent Diamond? Still on track?
It's still on track. I think it went out for the, let's see, the RFP went out, I think, within the last month. Still expected to have an award end of next summer into the fall. I think it's August or September.
So Breakground on at 27?
So next year's 26. I, I don't have the schedule in front of me, Mr. Winfrey, but that, that sounds about right. Just as a reminder, with the design-build process, we select, we've kind of got the plans already to 30%. We put the RFP out, we get the shortlist of bidders, eventually select one, design-build team, which like I said, will happen in the fall of next year. And then at that point, they're actually required to take that 30% plan, get it to 100%, and they have to do all of the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation. So there, there's, there's effort that they have to do to get it to construction. I, I think 27 sounds about right.
27 sounds optimistic.
Well, it's not that, it's just I don't have the schedule in front of me. I can't remember exactly what the, the Breakground schedule date is.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I will share for the benefit of the public that Austin Goine, I'm really proud of the work that he has done. He completed the update of our transportation website with all the projects that are impacting Goochlin. So I don't have that in front of me, but for anybody who wants to check out the status of the projects, it's current, it's updated. So huge thanks to you, Austin, for making that happen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
I can follow up on that.
I, I want to express my appreciation. In your absence last week, your team stepped up and made the repairs that had been requested for Blair Road. And, and I've gotten two citizens expressing their appreciation. I want to make sure that's passed along. You did a great job, and, and thank you for that. So that, that, we're too slow sometimes to express appreciation. I want to make sure you didn't leave the lectern without hearing that. So thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Winfrey.
Thanks.
And then the last question I was going to ask.
Oh, yes. One more.
Is, I do have, a residential neighborhood is interested in traffic calming. Cedar Run is the road in specific. It's a 25 mile per hour, and it connects with other communities that very much appreciate the good condition that the road is in, and, and they seem to be exceeding with some regularity, the 25 miles per hour. I've already spoken with the sheriff, and they're going to put up the radar, your speed signs. What is the process if either temporary rumble strips or speed bumps? Can you just give me some advice as to how that community might start a process to get some traffic calming in their neighborhood?
Yeah, so we have a traffic calming guide. And that's, that's where I would start with anybody, is, is review the traffic calming guide, make sure that the road is eligible. And we can always support county staff and, and citizens in that. I will say that there is an obligation by the locality, whether it comes from the sheriff's office or the county or whoever it is, to collect data to, to show that there is a legitimate speeding issue that could be resolved through some type of traffic calming. But all of that has to be squared away before we can entertain some type of deployment of rumble strips or, or any kind of speed bumps.
All right. And, and that's on the VDOT website?
It is on the VDOT website.
To do a search for traffic calming.
Traffic calm, yeah. It's always an easy Google search to just say, "VDOT traffic calming program," and it'll bring you up every VDOT neighborhood traffic program that, that exists.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
There you go. Thank you very much. Good job, y'all.
All right, appreciate it. Thanks for bearing with me with the, with the voice.
Thanks, Philip.
All right, more reports?
Yeah, board members, next item on the agenda is a report from Sarah Worley, our deputy county administrator for economic and community development. If you remember, last month, we had a presentation from General Services as well as Parks and Recreation. So Ms. Worley is here to share all the great work that the team has been doing over the course of the past several months, and happy to share some really good data with you today.
Good afternoon, Chairman, board members. Dr. Rayly, for the record, my name is Sarah Worley. I'm the deputy county administrator for economic and community development. And today, I have the pleasure of presenting you an update on our team's work over the last three to six months. So without further delay, let's jump in here. Goochlin County is experiencing robust growth in population, economic development projects, and service demands. Specifically, Goochlin has had a 14% population increase from 2020 to 2024, and over $760 million in commercial investment in the last five years. In fact, Goochlin is ranked among the fastest-growing jurisdictions in Virginia. But with growth comes increased demands from citizens, landowners, and developers who may require county services to develop, build, or capitalize on their real estate investment here in Goochlin County. The number of permits has remained steady over the last three years, but the complexity of the permits has increased, as demonstrated by developments such as Avery Point and the 3 million square foot Amazon Robotics Center. In addition, growth may cause concerns for citizens who want to stay involved in the public process to keep Goochlin's unique character. The Goochlin Board of Supervisors values both customer service and transparency. In fact, the first goal of the Board's statewide strategic plan is an efficient, effective, and transparent government with an emphasis on customer service excellence. So to that end, our department's focus has been to attract high-quality development and to enhance our development processes by reducing certain permits and plat, processing times, improving customer service, and streamlining workflows. In my presentation today, I am going to show you how our focus on these measures has begun to pay off. So first, jumping into economic development. Did you know that according to the November issue of Site Selector Magazine, two of the top five 2025 economic development projects in Virginia are located here in Goochlin County? They are Amazon's investment on Ashland Road and Eli Lilly's announcement in West Creek. And did you know that our economic development staff met with 63 businesses in 2025 so far and has assisted with over 300 business needs? Of course, we cannot talk about economic development success without mentioning the Eli Lilly announcement again. In September, Governor Glenn Youngkin and Eli Lilly announced a $5 billion investment in West Creek in Goochlin County. The investment will be Lilly's first dedicated, fully-integrated, active pharmaceutical ingredient and drug product plant. It's expected to be completed within the next five years, and the manufacturing site will bring more than 650 new high-paying jobs here to Goochlin County. We are also in very exciting times in economic development. All of the hard work of the Board and the Economic Development Authority is coming to fruition with over $430 million in actual investment here in 2025, and over $6 billion in active construction. In addition, in a forward-thinking manner, the Board adopted- In addition, in a forward-thinking manner, the Board adopted the Technology Overlay District and the Technology Zone to further economic development opportunities. Lastly, we are seeing strong returns on tourism initiatives with a fifteen percent increase in tourism spending from the previous year that contributed three-point-three million in direct local taxes here in Goochlin County. As you know, work does not happen in silos, so all the fruits of economic development labor directly affect community development. Over the summer, county administration created two deputy positions. I was honored to be chosen as a deputy for economic and community development. In September, after listening to staff and other stakeholders, including the development community, we strategically reorganized the department to allow additional bandwidth and to focus on areas that needed improvement. We added a dedicated plan of development administrator position, a planner-plat officer position, and a code enforcement officer. These are key positions needed to increase efficiency and customer service in the department. In addition, we identified key areas that either need process reforms or tweaks to enhance efficiencies. We are overhauling the plat process, which I will speak to a little bit later. We are moving to online submittals for plan of developments and land disturbance, and we institute a weekly tracking of permit progress. Due to these investments in staffing and tracking of permits, I am now happy to report that the number of overall outstanding plan reviews are down to twenty-six from a high of a hundred and nine. We will continue to track this measure as a performance in the future. I would like to spend a couple of minutes talking about each individual department that's within community development. I'd like to start with building inspection. Did you know that all three residential inspectors are combination inspectors? This means that when one of our inspectors are on a job site, they can inspect framing, plumbing, HVAC, gas, and electrical all at the same time. This saves times for citizens, builders, and creates efficiencies within department. Did you know that our customer service representatives are all certified International Code Council permit technicians? To pass this certification, each employee must attend two prerequisite courses and pass the International Code Council exam. This exam is challenging, as it requires the permit techs to think beyond the scope of their daily processes onto an international level. As you can see, the level of permit activity has remained strong over the last four years. Twenty-twenty-two represents the highest year of permit activity ever, with approximately forty-five hundred permit applications. From there, it decreased a bit, but still remains much higher than what we saw prior to 2020. This information was pulled in November and shows that building inspections has received approximately thirty-six hundred permit applications so far in 2025. As mentioned earlier, we are focused on reducing permit processing time. One of the goals is to reduce processing times for single-family dwelling permits to four weeks. I want to stress that we are tracking the processing time, not the time for issuance, because sometimes those delays are out of our control. We want to be in the position to have all plan review completed and ready to issue within four weeks. The building permit plan review process involves multiple different departments, including planning, zoning, health department, fire, and environmental. The building plan review is just one aspect of the permit process. With the addition of the residential plan reviewer approved in last year's budget, building plan review is currently being completed and averaged three working days prior to their self-imposed fifteen-day deadline. We have also instituted other processes to increase single-family residential building permit turnaround times, such as timelines for intake and tracking of outstanding permits. In addition, beginning January one, the planning department is reducing their internal timeframe for review from thirty days down to fifteen. This will ensure planning reviews are aligned with building reviews for their response times. For the first time since fiscal year twenty-four, the average number of inspections per inspector per day have decreased to make them more in line with the department goal. The ten inspections inspector per day is a number in the Insurance Services Office Evaluation System used to grade local building inspection departments on efficiency and level of service for the community. The desired level of service, according to ISO, is ten inspectors per inspector per day. Keeping the number to a manageable amount of inspections allows the inspector to spend more time at each job, ensuring that the work meets code and is to approved plans. This decrease this year can be attributed to the hiring of a second residential plans examiner that was approved in last year's budget. This key hire allowed one of the residential inspectors who was assisting with plan review to return to the field full-time and conduct inspections instead of splitting her time between residential plan review. Moving into transportation, with the hiring of the county engineer, we are now fully staffed in transportation department. This allows us to split focus on future transportation funding and current transportation projects and needs. Did you know that Goochlin has over two hundred and sixty million in funded committed to road improvements? And with a portion of that, nine-point-five is local funds. This means that we have successfully been able to leverage state and federal funding to advance transportation projects here locally in Goochlin County. Our environmental team has been hard at work, too. Did you know that there is over one-point-three miles of silt fence at the Amazon site that needs to be inspected regularly? And did you know that each department, each development must be inspected at least once every two weeks? So there's currently fifty-six active developments. That equates to fourteen hundred inspections annually. Each inspection takes roughly about three hours to complete. So that's roughly forty-three hundred hours a year for active site development inspections. As shown on the chart, the number of developments requiring inspections has remained steady over the last three years, with 2025 this year being the highest year on record for plan of development and land disturbance applications at sixty-nine. Another goal of the department is to streamline the plan of development and land disturbance processes so that ninety percent of initial reviews are completed within thirty days. We have already started this work with the reorganization to create a dedicated POD administrator. He is actively working on ways to streamline and better communicate the POD process to customers. In fact, a new webpage with flow charts has already been developed, and we anticipate fully going to electronic submission of plans by January one. This work done upfront should also help us reduce the number of times PODs must be submitted before approval. The graph shown on this slide is just for environmental reviews. One of the delays that we were experiencing in the POD and land disturbance process was an environmental plan review. As you can see on the chart, our plan review averages were higher than what we would like to see. This was attributed to understaffing and the attrition of a key employee in the department. The thirty-seven-day average was with staff working overtime and on weekends. Furthermore, other items such as stormwater maintenance inspections and bond release inspections were not being completed in a timely manner. With the hiring of the new stormwater engineer approved in last year's budget, there's been a sharp decrease in plan review times, and now there is time to do other mandated items. So moving into planning and zoning, did you know that since 2023, only about fifty percent of pre-applications follow through with a formal application? I think it's important statistics because it shows that there is work that's being done that may not be visible to the board through a CUP or through a rezoning. Similar to building permits, 2023 was the highest year in planning applications with a hundred and eighteen pre-applications, conditional use permits, and rezonings. So far in 2025, there are seventy-two. The plat process I did mention earlier is one area that we know that we can improve. Beginning this month, we are initiating a plat process reform that will involve input from multiple departments that are involved with the plat process. It will include input from the county attorney's office, assessor's office, GIS, clerk of the circuit court, and we also plan to involve surveyors and local engineering firms to gain input and insight into how we can improve our plat process. We anticipate this initiative to take about six months, and it may involve some ordinance amendments. Unfortunately, we do not have an accurate representation of existing plat review times now. The department is going to fully utilize our permitting software to assist us with tracking these plan review times, so we'll have a better estimate on plat review turnaround moving forward. So moving into the Department of Public Utilities, did you know that in fiscal year twenty-five, Department of Public Utilities distributed six hundred million gallons of water and collected seven hundred and fifty million gallons of wastewater? And did you know that the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, has three separate divisions? A business division, which handles billing and customer service, a construction division, which is our asset management and growth oversight, and our operations division. As you can see on the graph, DPU provided the highest amount of water and sewer service this past fiscal year. With economic development opportunities, we expect that amount to continue to rise. The Utility Masters Plan is nearing completion, and one of its recommendations will be for us to explore secondary water options to ensure water reliability into the future. Lastly, the community development department could not function without our front-facing, customer-focused staff in the customer service center. There are six members on our customer service center team. And as part of the reorganization mentioned previously, there is an official representative from every department now in the customer service center. We are working towards cross-training all members to enhance efficiency and customer service. Our goal is to increase the number of customer satisfaction responses by five percent, maintain their ratings four-point-oh or higher, and then receive at least five positive stories from customers as measured by data obtained from our online survey. Our overall priorities for next quarter will be maintaining our customer service, updating processes and engaging the development community, permit processing time, full utilization of electronic submissions, and dashboard tracking and reporting for real-time monitoring. All of this will be in addition to the workload and special projects that are already underway. To wrap up, I would like to extend our thanks to Dr. Rayly and to the board for providing their support to our department needs to effectively serve the citizens and customers of Goochlin County. We would appreciate the continued support of our initiatives and goals and patience as we implement new processes and changes, as well as continued support as state and federal regulations may change that may require additional staff or new processes. We will be requesting some additional positions and funding in the FY twenty-seven budget to maintain our level of service to citizens and the customers. And lastly, continued support and investment in our CIP and the utility infrastructure that services our residents and businesses. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Worley. I appreciate your presentation. One question I had was on slide seven.
Okay.
I just want to do a clarification on that. Sorry.
That's okay. We can go back. Almost there. One more.
I just want to clarify, when you say outstanding reviews, you're basically referencing NQ, correct?
Yes, yes.
It's just showing outstanding reviews going down. I just wanted to make sure our audience was aware that that was not a negative indicator.
No.
That the Q is getting smaller, so.
It's positive, very positive.
I knew that could be a potential misinterpretation. Additionally, you referenced it on slide ten, the inspectors needed. I appreciate you putting the goals that we're striving for in all of these. Do we have any challenges? I guess, first off, for those goals that are stated, do we have the number of inspectors currently to make those goals a reality? And if not, do we have a plan, at least in the foreseeable future? I understand the budget is very near, but it would always be great to know that we're in process. Do we have a plan to have the adequate inspectors to say those goals are reasonably, reasonable to achieve, I guess?
Yeah, the ten that you see there as I referenced is a goal that's established by the insurance services organization. So while we strive to meet that goal, we have not met that goal in many years. We have, for the first time, come closer to meeting that goal with the additional inspectors that have been hired. You may or may not see a request for an additional inspector to come through in fiscal year twenty-seven to help us get closer to that goal.
Okay. And are they, are those inspectors readily available? Do we, are there enough in the marketplace?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Keeping on that slide, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting it. I was under the impression that we were, so the goal's ten, but it's taking us twenty-two, is what, is that how I should read this?
For fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, which would be the first quarters, what we reported on, we're at sixteen-point-six.
So we're doing sixteen, but the goal's ten?
Yes.
So we're exceeding goal?
No. The goal would only be ten inspections per inspector per day. Our inspectors are averaging sixteen inspections per inspector per day.
This is a slide where the lower number is better. It's like golf, because we want fewer inspections, be able to have greater quality per inspection.
Okay. I mean, thanks for that clarification. And going back, you said that all of our customer service staff were code council permit technicians. Excuse me. And then later on, you said we have six. We have six folks?
We have six folks in the customer service center. One of them in the reorganization has come from planning into the customer service center, and one of her goals is to achieve the ICC certification for permit technician. So she has not been fully certified, but the other four have, five have.
Oh, okay. You said four, and I was like, oh my, I gotta do math. The General Assembly last year, maybe the previous year, I think it was last year, passed some legislation that required plan review to happen within certain timeframes. And if they didn't happen, it was almost a de facto approval. Is that affecting any of this goal-setting or processing? And are we at risk of being cornered or forced into de facto approvals because of timeframes?
I do not believe we are being cornered or forced into those approvals. We, our goals were set with those in mind, and we're actually aiming to be a little bit shorter in timeframes than those. So our goal and our hope is to get those out well in advance of their timeframes, and so we don't run into those issues.
Okay, that's great. And then I very much appreciate it, seeing that it went down to twenty-six outstanding. In my world, there's always somebody that lingers, like they stay around for, it's like the guest that won't go home. What is the longest tenured? I mean, do we have something that's there for like five months, or that just doesn't seem to ever get approved? We have that outlier, or?
The outliers would be included in the data. There are some permits, because permits, if they come in the first time and there's something wrong with the plans and we send them back out, then it's on the applicant to make those changes and resubmit them. So if they never resubmit, then it is still an outstanding permit. But we have tracked that plan review time has come in and out within the appropriate time.
And we've changed the review fee also to give an incentive for them to.
Yes.
Get it to.
To get it right the first time.
So that twenty-six is not somebody who's been there since the tracking started. It's dynamic. People come and go, come and go, so.
Yes.
And that was my perception. How does our standards compare, say, with an Oluwiza, or a Fluvanna, or Hanover, and I'm going to say, or a Powhatan? Is our thirty days or our ten-day, what are other counties? I mean, if we were to use a Six Sigma, what seems to be a standard out there, or is there one?
Well, the new legislation set a standard because there was other localities, not Goochlin, who were spending much longer than the thirty- and forty-five-day mandated turnaround times. So I would say that, you know, once that standard has been set by the General Assembly, we are shorter than that. And so I can't speak to other nearby localities, but I do hear. But I do hear anecdotally that our plan review time for certain things are, is much shorter than other plan review times.
That's good to know, because I will hear, oh, it takes so much longer to get something in Goochlin. And that's, of course, anecdotal, and that's the person who's not getting something yesterday, in my opinion, but that's an opinion. Previously, before, I guess this board took, it see, there was a discussion that we were going to require latitude longitude information on plats. And that was not done, at least I don't believe it has been required. Is that part of what you were discussing here, that we would now begin to require that? My recall is the surveying community and maybe the development community was less than happy with that requirement because it was going to increase either costs, and I think it was cost, not so much timeframe. But we are pursuing that, that we're gonna add technology, utilize technology to actually bring a little more precision to this?
That will be part of the process, that will be part of the discussion, and that is one of the key items that we want to bring back out to the development and the surveying community to gauge their input. Now, it's been a couple of years. There may have been some change in the market, and so we want to gain that insight. But that is something that we believe would increase efficiencies, very much so.
And other counties are doing that, are they not?
Yes, they are.
So we're not going to be the bleeding edge, but we're simply going to improve our technology, our use of technology.
Yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned new positions. And growing staff is sometimes easier than paying for it. So by improving our speed to market, it's a two-edged sword. I don't necessarily want to encourage rampant development in the county, I mean, precise planned development. So when we add more positions, we're gonna grow government. And so how do we justify those new positions so far as they're being offsetting revenues? Or are we just gonna ask current taxpayers to pay more for more staff?
So I believe that that would be a board decision when you do add new employees via the budget. And it would be the onus on us to demonstrate how we need those employees to continue to provide the level of service that our citizens and customers need from us.
Okay, I mean, I will, thank you. That answers my question. I'll look forward to that information.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Christie?
On the current slide, with the, you know, the inspections per day, are the inspectors working longer days to achieve these inspections?
Not necessarily. There are some days that, yes, they, they are in the field a little bit longer. And so what, what we become more worried about is the, that they're rushing through the inspections. And so we want to make sure that the work that they are doing is, is quality work. There's a lot of dynamics to the inspections, so they could go out, like I mentioned, the combination inspectors. They can go out and perform at framing inspection, like seven inspections within, you know, a short, shorter period of time. So it depends on the inspection. Some of the more complex commercial inspections, they could be out there all day long and only, you know, complete like three inspections, just because they're very complex.
Okay. I guess why I'm, why I'm asking is kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Lyle's comments was, if we got to the goal of 10, whether, in theory, I don't know, but if the inspectors were hourly employees, if they were, you know, extending their hours, getting overtime, that would justify a new position, get us closer to 10. If they're not, if they're salaried, then potentially taking some of the workload off might lead to employee retention, inspector retention and whatnot. I just, I guess I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
They are salaried employees.
Okay.
And we can go back and make sure that we are tracking the hours to make sure that, you know, we don't have inspectors out at 6, 7 o'clock at night trying to do inspections.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So to me, the overriding, overall, good point here is that we are setting goals. And I think, you know, that's, I don't, I'm not sure that that's totally new for me to see, but I know there's an increased emphasis on that, that you all are working on. And I think that's, that's good to set the goals. And with that, you're melding into an increased efficiency. So that's, that's how you can meet those goals, I think, by being more efficient and better quality work. I think that's something for us to look forward to, in other words. It's encouraging, and thank you for that. And that's a very good report, by the way.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr., all right. Dr. Rayly, the rest of it?
Yeah. Next on the agenda, we have a report from Zach Roberts, who's the Executive Director of the Pamunkey Regional Library.
Welcome, Zach.
Thank you, sir. I may not have anything to put on the screen, but that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your time today, Dr. Rayly. I'd like to acknowledge the Goochlin-Pamunkey Regional Library trustees members here. Barbara Sloan and Barbara Young are both in attendance. I thank them very much. Thank you for having me today. I wanted to just take a few minutes, and I promise I will be on time, just take a few minutes and talk to you about what's going on with the library. I started in August, and when I began, I did a systematic review of everything going on in the system. I met with every single Pamunkey Regional Library staff member, all seven branches. I attended programs, meetings with the staff, just to engage, to learn about what we're doing and how we're doing it. In some of my meetings with staff, I learned a lot of some of those inner details. I always joke that being in a library, I've been in libraries almost my entire career. And it's kind of like when you get a new car, you have those presets. The function of the car is the same. You're moving in the same direction, you understand. But all those details, how to adjust your seat, how to set your radio stations, all those are different in every library you ever worked in. So this gave me that opportunity to kind of learn about it. And Pamunkey has a lot of great things going on it. We have a lot of community engagement. Last year, we saw three-quarters of a million people coming into our buildings, 50,000 of which came into our Goochlin branch. We had program attendance. We have seen over the last fiscal year a massive increase in those people engaging with us outside of the traditional books and materials. So when people, a lot of people think libraries are coming in, finding a book, finding a DVD on the shelf, and that is a staple of the library. But there's a lot more that goes on. We had, last year, we had over 500 just at Goochlin programs where the public can engage with us, whether that's children's storytimes, everything from that, all the way up to art classes and everything in between for adults, kids, and every age group. And those kind of interactive things are bringing folks in. This last year, we expanded operational hours at the Goochlin Library, which allowed us to see a massive increase in the people coming in to utilize our spaces. So we have large community rooms that are available for public use that cost nothing. We also have multiple study rooms that are available. Yes, today I was over there for, for a brief meeting before I came here for another meeting. And the, the study rooms were all being used. It sounded like people were working or doing school. So those kind of dynamic spaces are definitely an important function. And last year, we had almost 20,000 people through PRL that were using us for our meeting rooms, for our community spaces. And then our program attendance last year was almost 65,000 people coming in to engage with all of our, all of our branches. Like I said, the Goochlin Library had almost 50,000 people walk through its door this last year. 71,000 items were circulated. That includes digital content that you can take out on your phone or tablet. We had 750 new borrowers, so folks that created a library card for the very first time at the Goochlin Library this last year. And we had over 25,000 questions asked of our Pamunkey staff at the Goochlin branch by members of the public, whether they're coming in in person and engaging with them, or calling in on the phone, or asking through the website. The Goochlin staff answered 25,000 different questions from the public this last year. I wanted to acknowledge, because earlier in '26, the Goochlin, Goochlin County did some work to refresh the, the Goochlin branch. They redid the flooring inside of much of the, the branch, both the staff side as well as the public side. They redid our public restrooms, and they did a lot of paintwork that needed done. The other big thing that they did is we have a storytime, like children's section as you walk into the building. They redid a majority of that space as well. We also have some projects coming up on the, at the Goochlin branch. We, in fact, I just signed the paperwork today. We're buying a new, larger book drop to accommodate those, those things that are coming back, physical books and materials that are coming back into the branch. The Goochlin staff take care of the maintenance of that building, and I want to thank you all because the staff have been great to work with. Goochlin County has been a wonderful partner, helping us take care of that building. A few projects we're working on. We're looking at expanding services outside of the buildings with outreach services. The Goochlin team have been going to the elementary school, Goochlin Elementary. They just had five visits this last, this last month. They engaged with 60 folks in the kindergarten classes. So we're trying to get in, introduce those young folks to the library, understand what it's like. A lot of them have the libraries in the school, of course, but the public library is its own unique thing. So our teams are going in there and talking to them and engaging with them. We're also upgrading a lot of our technology and furniture around many of the buildings, not just Goochlin. We're, we're assessing all of the needs of the PRL branches in the next several months to begin crossing some needs off of our list that we have. There's also a strategic plan process that is currently beginning this next week. We're gonna have two months of public engagement where I'm gonna go out. There's 14 different meetings, both in-person at, at all of the seven branches, as well as virtual options where folks can tell me what they need in their public library. And I have, I have, on the website currently, if you go to pamunkylibrary.org, there is a calendar, Goochlin, I'm visiting Goochlin branch twice in person, as well as all of our other branches if there's not a convenient time for the Goochlin visits. There's evening and weekend meeting times as well, so those folks who can't do during the day, there will be opportunities in the evenings and the weekends as well. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today and just give a few minutes. And I was under seven minutes, so I'm doing good. But thank you all, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them. Okay?
I just like a lot of progress. Excuse me, go ahead.
No, no, I didn't know he was being dismissed.
You're next. Now, don't leave yet. Go ahead. No. Go for it.
All right. I just, on the numbers, you, you said that there were 50,000 Goochlin visits. That's not discreet individuals. That's total. So somebody may come in three or four times.
That's it, yes. There can be multiple visits from one person. And how we measure that is basically literal door counts at the entrances of the building. So I could walk in the building three times in a week, and I'm counting for three individual times.
That was my thought.
Yes.
The old 80/20 rule.
Yeah.
You know, 20% of your customers or 80% of your business.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I appreciated hearing that the capital improvements were done. I believe, Dr. Rayly, that would be use of the proffer money that was required to be used for libraries?
We actually still have the proffer money that we're working on, trying to find options for those, so I believe this was outside of the proffer funds.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly.
Sorry.
That's okay. I got my answer. And that then goes through, and I love the fact that you're looking to expand services. There's been stand-up conversation about, I, I don't want to, kiosks, where maybe in the Centerville Shopping Center or someplace in eastern Goochlin.
Yes.
That people could order books and then go by that, that, I'll call it vending machine or pickup spot, and collect a book without, is that still an active concept, discussion, ideation, or?
I'm, I'm not gonna break any news by saying this, because I've said this publicly in, in other board meetings. We're looking at that as well as potentially a bookmobile option, adding in a bookmobile service where we can take a mobile library and go into the community, go to places like Avery Point, as an example, and visit them with effectively a miniature library on wheels. So you can get all of the services of the library conveniently delivered to you. We just had a, a survey of the public where we got 25, 100 people that responded to our survey. And one-third of those respondents said that transportation or proximity location is a challenge to them getting in the building. So we do know that that is a real concern and a real challenge for folks, where one-third of our, our respondents said, I would get in more if I, if I had the proximity.
I think Mr. Bodders and I can both agree, there's not as many county services in the eastern part of Goochlin as, as our folks might, might enjoy. And again, this is just a precursor, but we have begun our budget season.
Yes, sir.
We're down a couple of communities. I think two of the counties that previously were in are no longer participating in.
Correct.
In the library system. And there was an economy of scale that more people contributing helped pay for overhead.
Yeah.
Do you have any inkling whether we will be looking at a larger budget request, which is not unreasonable?
I, I did, I did have a meeting yesterday with Dr. Rayly, and not to talk, you know, too much about it. There is, there is an additional request.
Okay.
Over, over last year's, and that is also to increase some of our goals, like one of the positions that we'd like to add is an outreach services position, so that we can go into the community outside of the physical walls of the branches, and we can take the, the services that people grow and need from the library into the communities, into those community organizations. So part of our request is absolutely expanding services into, into those areas where they're not really served well by, by our current brick-and-mortar facilities.
Thank you for that. I, I'm an advocate. I like libraries. I'm a library advocate, so that's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have an off-the-wall thought.
Sure.
When I, I think of Pamunkey, I think of the Pamunkey River. Perhaps it's more described as a region rather than a river running through it. And I think of the eastern, the other two counties we're in, they were eastern more Pamunkey than we are. And has any thought been given to changing the name now that we've reduced it to Hanover and Goochlin?
Not, not officially. I have had the thought, and, you know, my apologies. I have had the thought in my head, maybe this is a good opportunity for us to rebrand entirely.
To really define where we are makes sense.
There, there is, there is, there is the fact that Pamunkey Regional Library has been existence since 1941, and that history is real. And so to, to, you know, that is in the back of my head at all times. But I do think, you know, knowing our recent history, and those days are behind us, I'm considering how rebranding could affect us. And that doesn't necessarily include a, a name change, but it could. So that is, that is up for consideration.
Sort of like I said, it's off the wall, but it.
Yeah.
May make some sense.
Sure.
Well, thank you very much. You guys are making a lot of progress. Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Some questions?
Yes.
So first off, I want to thank you for the presentation, or the report, but also I'm thrilled about the enhancements to the physical plant. That's important. But I did want to just piggyback on what Supervisor Lyle said. Have we had outreach, and I'm glad you're talking about an outreach individual, you know, an individual focus on that. Have we had outreach to the various HOAs? It sounds like we have to Avery Point. So that's a first, but, you know, secondly, as kiosks, as things like that are proven or, you know, thought through, could we do something as simple as laminated directions on how to access our digital content? How to be a digital user of our library services in the east end and leave those at the clubhouses, at the various main points, and highlight that as more physical outreach opportunities are in the works?
Yeah, absolutely. So next week, I actually have a, one of our existing staff members is gonna join me temporarily in administration, who has a marketing background. And part of my, part of my wish list for them is we need to promote better those things that we're currently doing. So whether that's through literature, whether that's through pushing through, we're currently working on a refresh of our website to have a mobile-friendly version, as well as potentially an app. So we're looking at those kind of things to not only communicate better what we do, but then how we do it and connecting those folks, because the reality is, is if, if you're not somebody going into the library regularly, there is a high likelihood that you don't even know all the things you can get for. you don't even know all the things you can get for free from the library. So, so us kind of connecting those pieces and connecting those dots is going to be, over the next several months, is going to be a critical step in our progress, for sure.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Stay tuned.
Yes.
In other words, a lot of improvements on the way.
The work continues.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
All right, we need to move along here, so thank you very much.
Yeah.
Dr. Rayly.
Board members, the next several reports are in your packet, including the fire rescue report, as well as the accounts payable report for November of '25, planning and development activity, as well as a December 2nd broadband report and the December agricultural summary. Just a few highlights real quick, it's been a very busy couple of days and weeks for our fire rescue team, and Chief Ferguson sent you an email with some things that happened over the course of the past couple of days with some structured fires, and there were, you know, accidents today. So, the team continues to be very busy and just grateful for their service and what they do on the front lines of, of serving our community. So, we do have staff here to answer any questions that the board may have as a result of reviewing those reports.
Any questions on any reports, any reports that any board member have?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just mention, this is not a, a sign, but I did attend the VA1 Tourism Summit in Danville earlier this, no, not this month, last month, and we had staff representation, there's some good things happening, and one of those F-words that I like, "free," was mentioned that there is some research available through one of the hotel providers that would allow us to get better insight into tourism here in Goochland. So, I appreciate staff attending, I think there's good information that's come out of that, and Virginia's for lovers.
And thank you for attending as well, on your own time, yes. Anything, any other reports? Okay.
Board members, there are several items on your consent agenda for consideration today, and so, given the magnitude of the number of items on the agenda, I just wanted to take a moment and just describe them a little bit for the benefit of our public. The first item on your agenda is a request to amend your current FY '26 budget to transfer $478,580 between departments within our general fund budget, and as you heard from Ms. Worley, there's been a lot of tremendous progress that has been made on the work within our economic development, community development departments, and I'm grateful for your support in allowing us to reorganize in a way that's going to allow us to accomplish those strategic objectives. Those, many of those positions were not budgeted, but through strategic abandonment and through sharpening our pencil and looking at salary lines, we're able to move those dollars from lines within the budget to other budget lines without tapping into any sort of fund balance or additional resources. So, we're able to make that happen within our budget, we just need your approval to do that categorical transfer as noted in your packet today. Next item on the consent agenda is a request from the Goochland County Public Schools that includes an appropriation of $389,874 in turnback funds, and so, you can see a list of those requests within the packet today, and so, this is a result of unused local funds. It includes an under expenditure and over revenue for the fiscal year 2025. Some of the items requested in that turnback include funds for career and technical education, heavy equipment replacement, an enrollment projection study, strategic planning, vehicle replacements, implementation of traffic study recommendations, and funds for the use of maintenance, so seeking your approval for that, as well as the appropriation of $330,000, $36 in federal grants, as well an appropriation of $23,000 in the school operating fund for community action program funds received for preschool programs. So, several things that are listed there, the schools are requesting on the consent agenda. Next item on the consent agenda relates to a request to transfer funds from our general fund to the Economic Development Authority. As noted, we've been strong supporters of Eli Lilly and the work that needs to happen in order to have them welcomed into our community. And so, at the EDA's October 15th meeting, they voted to approve funding to execute a contract to begin the traffic impact analysis, and so, that action by the EDA allowed Eli Lilly to start that work quickly and gave a lot of flexibility in the process to make sure that they were meeting their timelines, and so, the EDA is requesting that the Board of Supervisors transfer $156,640 to the EDA to reimburse them for the costs of the traffic impact analysis. The next item on the consent agenda is the adoption of a resolution that would allow Eli Lilly to be placed into the Commonwealth Expedited Permitting Program. Certainly, that's something that's going to help them as they go through the process, and having access to the Commonwealth's program will be a benefit to them and to us along the way. Next item on the consent agenda is a request to authorize me, as your county administrator, to execute the eighth addenda to extend the water and wastewater agreements between us and Goochland County and West Creek Associates. This comes at no cost to the taxpayers and has been previously renewed seven times, seeking the eighth renewal today. Next on the consent agenda is a request to authorize the donation of two surplus fire department sports utilities vehicles, SUVs and associated accessories, one of them to Cumberland County's Fire Department and the other to the Metro Richmond Flying Squad. The Metro Richmond Flying Squad was one of the two fires that we had recently and are strong partners of ours, and asking for us to be, and we are requesting your approval to donate one of those vehicles to them to support their overall partnership and objectives that we have together. The board is also asked to request a public hearing, set a public hearing for January 6, 2026, to consider an ordinance amendment that would allow, you know, allow us to update position titles. As you again heard today, we had a lot of restructuring that took place, and so, we need to do some housekeeping in order to update those titles and make sure that the titles and the ordinances are accurate and true and specific references to county engineer and, and other references to the Director of Community Development. So, all we're asking today is that you set a public hearing for January the 6th. And the last item on your consent agenda is consideration of the 2026 holiday calendar. That is in alignment with, that is in alignment with the Commonwealth of Virginia's calendar as associated with the Department of Human Resources Management. So, board members, a lot on your consent agenda today, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or additional detail that may be needed as you consider this today.
And the TCSD.
There is one for TCSD.
Number 8.
I skipped that, thank you. And so, there is a request to set a public hearing on January 6th to consider an ordinance allowing one property to come into the Takahoe Creek Service District, tax map 58802A. That would be a request to set a public hearing that would take place on January 6th. Thank you. Teamwork.
Any comments? Do we have a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, a move that the board approve as, approve consent agenda items one through nine?
We have a second?
Second.
Whoop. We have two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's carried, we have one more item. Presentation of House Speaker, County Administrator. Do we do that?
We have not done that, and we'll ask Sarah Worley to come forward, and, you know, board members, you're asked to consider today a performance agreement that has been previously adopted by the Goochland County Economic Development Authority, and so, as a part of the work that we've been doing with Eli Lilly, there's some agreements that we have with them for your consideration today, and so, given the magnitude of these agreements, I have asked Ms. Worley to give us a presentation for the benefit of the public.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly. As I mentioned in my previous presentation, in September, Governor Glenn Youngkin and Eli Lilly announced $5 billion investment in West Creek and Goochland County. The investment will be Lilly's first dedicated, fully-integrated, active pharmaceutical ingredient and drug product plant. It is expected to be completed within the next five years. The manufacturing site will bring more than 650 new high-paying jobs to Goochland, including highly skilled engineers, scientists, operations personnel, and lab technicians. The project is also anticipated to bring 1,800 construction jobs to the region and greatly benefit our local economy. Lilly expects that for every dollar invested in the Goochland facility, up to $4 will be generated in local economic activity. Additionally, each manufacturing job will support multiple positions and related industries like supply chains, logistics, and retail. To recruit Lilly, Goochland County offered the following incentives: 45.8 million in incremental tax revenue rebates over 20 years, a dedicated building inspector who has already been hired, a third-party environmental inspections, a traffic impact analysis, a dedicated project manager, and to double the funding for Goochland County Public School Career and Technical Education Program. For any incentive, we perform a return on investment calculation, or ROI, to ensure that the county is making a smart investment by offering the incentive. ROIs look at what kind of taxes and how much taxes will be paid over a certain period of time. In a performance agreement incentive, like we are proposing for the 45.8 million, a portion of the increased taxes are reimbursed on an annual basis for a period of time. We have done several performance agreement incentives in the past, including incentives for Capital One, Hardywood, and more recently, Residence Inn. The other incentive items will expand county resources to support Lilly and will ultimately benefit the county long-term. To dig deeper into the performance agreement itself, the agreement specifies that Lilly will invest $2,148,793,019 over the next 10 years. Of that, 812 million will be in machinery and tools, and 1.3 billion will be in real estate and business personal property. The incentive will provide tax reimbursements up to $45,864,691 over 20 years. It is important to note that the tax reimbursements are from increased revenue received from Lilly investment. No existing tax revenue will be rebated. These are dollars that would not otherwise exist without Lilly's investment in Goochland County. The tax reimbursements will be 45% of incremental real estate taxes actually paid by Eli Lilly and then actually received by the county for the prior calendar year that are over and above the real estate taxes assessed at the value of the project site as of January 1st, 2027. It is important to note that neither the Takahoe Creek Service District ad valorem tax or the 55% revenue sharing of the base real estate tax will be rebated. The county will retain 55% to be used to pay down the TCSD service debt. The county is keeping 55% of business personal property taxes and rebating 45% of the business personal property taxes that are actually paid by Eli Lilly and then actually received by the county for the prior calendar year. Likewise, the county is keeping 45% of machinery and tools taxes and rebating 55% of the machinery and tools taxes that are actually paid by Eli Lilly and then actually received by the county for the prior calendar year. These reimbursements will continue until either the 45 million is rebated or 20 years, whichever comes first. While we are rebating some of the taxes, we are forecasting that Lilly will provide at least $5 million in increased annual revenue for the county annually. At the end of 20 years, the county will have received at least $100 million in direct tax revenue, in addition to spin-off benefits such as job creation and related industry locations and expansions in Goochland County. This agreement has been executed by Eli Lilly, the Goochland EDA, and has been reviewed by the county attorney. I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have some questions. Ms. Worley, I, thank you very much. I, if you could just quickly summarize what the Commonwealth is putting in to attracting Eli Lilly, I just think that's important to note as well, because they really did go a long way in helping us and partnering with us to attract Eli Lilly, and I also don't want individuals to think that it's just coming on the shoulders of Goochland residents.
Yeah.
You know, whether you consider it revenue that we're not, you know, fully taking or not, this is just a, this is a portion of a great amount that was used to entice such a great economic investment.
Yeah, so, the state is putting forth a workforce program to support Eli Lilly as they are recruiting and training and developing their workforce here in the Richmond region, and that will be a comprehensive workforce program, kind of cradled to the grave for, for their workforce. They are also started a new expedited permitting process, which Eli Lilly will be part of that expedited permitting process to help get through all of the requirements from a state level as well, and then they have offered financial incentives as well, up to 100 million.
And committed about 10 million to CTE, is it?
Uh, the
Education, uh, community college?
Uh, yes, and that was to, to, to start a workforce program within the community college system, yes.
Yes, sir.
You hadn't finished.
Um, I just want to make, well, this is so positive to Goochland County folks. The agreement which Ms. Worley is referring to is what we've agreed to. This is an operating agreement with Lilly, and it's based on 2.4 million, a billion? That whole agreement is based on 2.4 billion dollars, and it means we'll give up 45% of the real estate tax in the form of a rebate, but we keep 55%. Very significant, if that was the end of it, that would be very significant for this county. That's 55% of something we otherwise would not have received. But, the announcement in September was 5.1 billion, is it?
It was 5 billion.
5 billion dollars, okay? So, the agreement of, we don't rebate anything between the 2-point whatever which is in this agreement and the 5 billion. We keep 100% of that tax revenue, folks. That is so significant and so lucrative to us. It, it far exceeds, you know, I mean, it's more than double the, the two, the original amount, so that is, you know, that is transformative for Goochland County in the form of revenue support and to all of our services and so forth and so on. You know, and I, I just want to also say, you know, you give credit to the, to the state, and I witnessed that, but I want to give credit to our staff, you, Madam, and Chance, and everybody on the staff that worked very hard on that. You're the ones that took them through on a site tour and, and, you know, sold them on Goochland County and the living and the quality of life we have here and so forth. So, kudos, home run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I also want to illuminate the fact that this revenue coming in that is going towards TCSD debt, when that debt is paid off, that, for somebody in a $750,000 home, is going to be about a $2,400 tax reduction. And I'm going to go on a limb and say, this revenue is going to expedite and speed up, and I know currently we're showing a 2030 payoff of the TCSD debt, and I know that this is still going to be a year or two in development, but I sincerely like the idea of somebody seeing a $2,400 tax cut. And so, this kind of development is, is, I mean, it's doing what we said. There had been a lot of concern that the refinancing that the previous board did was going to extend the debt and just saddle us with a never-ending TCSD ad valorem, and, and I would submit that your efforts, the state's efforts, the result of Lilly coming to Goochland is, is everything disputes that, that that tax cut is coming and, and perhaps a whole lot quicker than many, many people had realized. The other is that doubling the CTE education program, I'm going to go on another limb and say, we were probably going to increase that rascal anyway. So, having a reason to do so is, is just icing on the cake, and I know the school system is already in discussions on expanding the agricultural opportunities that will come under CTE, and I promise you, anybody who needs a plumber can appreciate the need for electricians, plumbers, and, and what I would call the, the real services industry that's out there. So, in many respects, we committed to do something that we were likely going to do anyway, and, and the fact that Lilly appreciated our And, and the fact that Lilly appreciated our vision, this county's vision towards those trades is, is, is heartwarming. And, and thank you for your efforts. I mean, it's a...
Thank you.
I don't want to say it's once in a lifetime because I know you've got two or three out there in the wings you just can't talk about, and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Chair?
So, we have a motion?
Oh, I just had one other thing to share. I realize with activity we've got coming, I, I hadn't thought about this, but I just want to put this idea out there for the public. We have a lot of construction crews coming into the county. We have a lot of skilled tradesmen coming into the county. Just in the coming years, something that the EDA could do, something we could do in partnership together. I'd really like us to put on our thinking hats in regards to how we can put our best foot forward in every which way to show these, these large crews of individuals and skilled tradesmen, Goochlin is a great place with cooperative staff and people who want to make their lives easier and also come back to. Because we know what we're planning over the next several decades will require numerous construction crews to not only come for individual projects, but keep coming back is our hope. And I think there's probably some good investment money, we, good money we could spend right now that helps in that process. So, you, you would know better, chairing our economic development ta- forces, but I think we want to see repeat customers and repeat service providers. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, does that mean you want to make a motion for...
Motion too, yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve this performance contract between the county, the Economic Development Authority, and Eli Lilly and Company.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Christie, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, I have one more little tidbit. Chief Ferguson, occasionally comes up about the flying, Richmond Flying Squad. I mean, you don't have to take a time right now, just the next time you're... I know I could sit down and talk with you and you could explain it to me, but I think that's a very valuable resource that, that maybe the public ought to be aware of. It's a volunteer organization, is that correct? Yeah, so maybe next time, just put a line item in there and tell us what the Flying Squad's all about. All right, thank you. Anything else to come before the good of the cause here? If not, we'll recess for a dinner break and be back at six o'clock.
Okay, I'd like to call the evening session of the December 2 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. The first, uh, we have citizen comment period first. I'd like to open the meeting to citizen comment, and Dr. Rayleigh, would you remind us of the rules?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, anyone who may be interested in speaking on items that are not on the public hearing agenda this evening may certainly do that during this time. We welcome public comment as it certainly helps us do our work and become stronger as a community. If you want to speak, you have up to three minutes. We just ask that you come to the podium and then you direct your comments directly to the chair. You see timers in front of you. The light will start at green with three minutes, and then as you progress, it'll transition to one yellow light with one minute, and then continuously blink until you have a red light, which tells you that your time is up. If you want to cede your time to another speaker, you're certainly welcome to do that. We have a total of 10 minutes because each person could be increasing their time by a total of 10 minutes. The board is not intending to have public comment last more than one hour this evening.
Thank you, sir. I'll now open the citizen comment period. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the citizen comment period. All right, the first item is a public hearing. District 1 CU 2025-6, application by Paul Bush requesting to renew conditional permit, case CU 2019-21, for mining operations on 34.368 acres on Shannon Hill Road, approximately three quarters of a mile southwest of Payne Road on tax map 31050. The property is zoned agricultural, general, A1. The conditional use permit is required by county zoning ordinance, section 15102, in accordance with section 15283F. The comprehensive plan designates this area as rural enhancement area. Staff is requesting deferral of this application to the Board of Supervisors' January 6 meeting. Do you want to say anything, Ms. Sherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, you have basically stated the deferral request. I'm here if anybody has any questions.
So they've asked for a deferral, and staff is recommending it. Do we have a motion to defer?
I move to defer, um, hold on, motion sheet. Application CU 2025-0006.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
And that's to your January 6, 2026 meeting?
To the 26th, to January 26th.
To the January 20, January 6, 2026.
26th. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call, okay.
So we'll start with Mr. Lyle.
Yay.
Mr. Christie.
Yes.
Mr. Spunhour.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
And Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
All right, next we have District 4 CU 2025-5, application by Enterprise Leasing Company of Norfolk and Richmond LLC, requesting to renew conditional use permit, case CU 2019-20, to allow automobile rental on 3.411 acres on 40 Broad Street Road, on tax map number 471043C. The property is zoned business, general, B1, with proffered conditions. The cuff is required by county zoning ordinance, section 15242. The comprehensive plan designates this area as commercial. Mrs. Sherry will present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, I'm Jamie Sherry, Director of Planning and Zoning. Our first public hearing this evening is a request in District 4. Enterprise Leasing Company of Norfolk and Richmond is requesting a renewal of a conditional use permit, excuse me, CU 1900020, for an automobile rental company. The business is located in the Broadview Shopping Center in Centerville Village. The property is zoned business, general, B1, with proffers. The vicinity map shows the location of the subject property in the eastern portion of the county, circled in red. The aerial photo shows two parcels outlined in red. Both parcels, along with several other parcels, make up the Broadview Shopping Center. The enterprise rental business is within the larger of the two parcels. The smaller rectangular parcel was created and sold to a different entity within the Broadview Shopping Center ownership. And just for the record, that is the Dollar General, which is within that location. The zoning map shows the subject property and the properties to the east and the south as business, general, B1. The north, to the north, the properties are zoned industrial limited, M1. To the west and the southwest are properties that are zoned residential, general, R3, and agricultural limited, A2. The comprehensive plan map shows the subject property and most of the adjacent properties designated as commercial. The blue parcels to the west are designated as county, state, and institutional. The fire station, this is the location of Fire Station 3 on two separate parcels. So a little bit of history about the property and the zoning. In 1992, the area encompassing Broadview Shopping Center, the industrial area to the north, the residentially zoned properties to the west, were all rezoned in one rezoning case back in 1982. In 2007, there was a proffer amendment that was approved to allow additional access points from the Broadview Shopping Center to Broad Street Road, as well as to St. Matthews and Briggs Drive. In 2020, in January of 2020, conditional use permit CU 1900020 was approved for, to allow for an automobile rental business, which is subject to tonight's public hearing. CU 2019-20020 was approved for an automobile business, as I had just mentioned, a rental business. The business is comprised of an office, and on the photo you can see where the office location is. There is a car wash station, also shown on the conceptual plan, as well as an area shown in the hashed mark in the parking lot, where up to 20 rental vehicles can be parked as part of the conditional use permit. The applicant is not proposing any changes with this application for renewal. As conditioned, this proposed, this proposed use would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. A committee meeting was held on June 11, 2025. Attendees included Planning Commissioner, member Mr. Patack. No citizens were in attendance. There was, however, discussion about business operations, future expansion, the company business model, and frequencies of cars moving on and off the site. At their October 16, 2025 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application with a 5-0 vote. Nobody spoke at the public hearing. So the following is a summary of the proposed conditions. A complete list of the conditions are located in the agenda packet on, starting on page 132. It also should be noted that the conditions have been updated to be consistent with current standard conditions. Condition number one allows for the continuation of an automobile rental business. Condition number two requires improvements to generally conform to the conceptual plan, which is Exhibit A. Condition three prohibits outdoor storage. This includes automobile parts, tools, and other business-related products. Condition four restricts the number of automobiles related to the Condition four restricts the number of automobiles related to the business to 20, and they can only be stored in the designated area on the approved plan of development, which was shown in the conceptual plan with the hashed marks. Number five allows for an automobile washing and vacuuming station. This requires all cleaning to be conducted within the designated location and screened from the shopping center parking lot. Condition number six states the conditional use permit will expire on the last day of January 2035. This is a 10-year renewal. And lastly, condition number seven is our standard transfer or lease condition, requiring the county to be notified if the property is to be rented or sold to somebody different.
And Jamie, the conditions definitely appear on the page number you gave, but that's the Planning Commission resolution?
Okay.
So the board resolution is on page 129.
Appreciate it.
And it doesn't, the conditions didn't change?
The conditions did not change, thank you.
So what she went through is still the correct ones.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is also in attendance.
The board, any questions whatsoever? I'm assuming there have been, there have been no complaints?
There's been no complaints with the public. We have had some conversation with the fire marshal and have told this to the applicant. There have been occasions where someone doesn't know better, so they'll drop off the car, like just park it in front of the business, run inside, try and do their business, but that is not allowed. It's actually in the fire lane, so rather than condition something like that, then I would be doing the fire marshal's job. We've decided to continue to have him monitor it and discuss it with the applicant.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move, oh, do we have any public, okay, my bad.
Does the applicant want to speak? No? Okay.
Typically, for the record, if you wouldn't mind just coming up, giving your name to say you were here, it's a very little moment, but it helps to create a good record. Melissa Lounsbury with Enterprise Leasing Company of Norfolk, Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak during the public comment, public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right, now back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board grant conditional use permit CU-2025-5, application by Enterprise Leasing Company, subject to the imposed conditions as presented.
Second? Mr. Spoonhour, second? We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. I have a question for the applicant. I have tried to rent cars, my question is around the restriction of 20 vehicles per, at a time. If that number were higher, would you have more available cars? The reason I ask is I've tried to rent cars there at least five times and was only able to do it once. So has that, does that hinder your business?
It doesn't. It's kind of like an ebb and flow. If we have availability, they're on site. If we don't, they're on the road, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Lyle?
Yea.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Spoonhour?
Since this was one of my first votes ever for yea, I'll go yea again.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
All right, next up is District 5, application by Graham Real Estate LLC requesting a proffer amendment to rezoning case RZ 1998-5A to allow for self-storage and mini warehouse facility on 35.54 acres at 12330 Patterson Avenue on tax map 641074A. The property is zoned business, general B1, with proffered conditions. The comprehensive map plan designates this area as commercial. Now, this is a, has a companion. Are you going to present both of them?
Yes.
Should I read the second one as well into the record?
Please.
And we'll vote on them separately, I think, but you're going to present in tandem. District 5, conditional use 2025-4, application by Graham Real Estate LLC requesting a conditional use permit for a self-storage mini warehouse facility on nine, on a nine-acre portion of 35.54 acres at 12330 Patterson Avenue on tax map 641074A. The property is currently zoned business, general B1, with proffered conditions, but in companion case RZ 2025-05, which was previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting a proffer amendment to allow self-storage mini warehouse facility. We'll get that straight here in a minute. The cup is required by county zoning ordinance 15242. Comprehensive plan designates this area as commercial. Mrs. Sherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated, the next public hearing is for two applications by Graham Real Estate LLC requesting the use of a mini warehouse self-storage facility in District 5. The property location is 12330 Patterson Avenue, which is the same parcel that is, that the Tucker Ho Pines Retirement Community is located on. The applicant is requesting a proffer amendment to rezoning case RZ 1998-00005A to add the mini warehouse self-storage use to the property. The applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit for nine of the 35.5 acres for the self-storage use. A conditional use permit is required by the business general B1 zoning district. These are two separate applications that I will be presenting simultaneously. The board may hold one public hearing, but as you stated, Mr. Winfrey, you will need to hold separate votes on each request. The vicinity map shows the location of the subject property in the southeastern portion of the county, the area circled in red. The aerial map shows the subject property outlined in red. As you can see on the aerial photo, the western portion of the parcel has already been developed. This is the Tucker Ho Pines Retirement Community. If approved, the mini warehouse will be located just to the east on nine acres of the 35.5 acre parcel. There is also an access road that's a little difficult to see on here that starts at the Tucker Ho Pines facility and runs to the eastern Goochland County Pump Station, which is located just to the east of the subject property. The zoning map shows the subject property as business general B1, the zoning districts to the, B1, the zoning districts as are the properties to the east. The property shown in blue as, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the wrong one. Let me, let me start over, forgive me, please. The zoning map shows the subject property in the business general B1 zoning district, as are the properties to the east. The properties to the west are zoned industrial limited M1, and properties across the street are zoned residential limited R1. Now the comprehensive plan. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates the subject property as commercial, as are most of the properties to the east. The property shown in blue as county, state, and institutional is the location of the eastern Goochland Pump Station. Properties to the west are designated as both rural enhancement area as well as prime economic development. Both of those properties are in the West Creek Business Park, but the area designated for the rural enhancement area is significantly impacted by floodway, so the property is essentially undevelopable for industrial uses. The properties to the south are designated as single-family residential medium density. This is the Rivergate subdivision. Okay, so as I mentioned, there are two separate applications before the board this evening. There's the proffer amendment to add the self-storage use, as well as the companion case for the conditional use permit for a self-storage use, which is required as part of the B1 zoning district. So a little bit of history of the zoning of this property. In 1998, the property was rezoned to business general B1 with proffers for an office use that had two buildings. In 2018, there was a proffer amendment approved for the property that added home for the ages and a conceptual plan with two phases of the development. The first phase of the development was for the construction of Tucker Ho Pines Retirement Community. Phase two of the conceptual plan was for office and was never developed. So the proposed use, as I've mentioned several times, is the self-storage mini warehouse facility. The use will be on the nine acres identified in the red on the exhibit B, which is the CUP boundaries exhibit. The facility will have office hours and staff will be on site between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sundays. Access would be gated with a keypad and cameras for security. Leaseholders may access outside of the regular office hours. The applicant has indicated that they would be allowed to enter without any other staff in, on site from 4:30 a.m. in the morning to 10:00 p.m. daily. They will be sight during the office hours, so will be staff on site during those hours. So the proposed use, proposed are four buildings totaling 110,275 square feet. There will be one large three-story building, which is the large building in the middle of the conceptual plan, two smaller buildings identified by the two smaller buildings, and then a one-story larger medium-sized building. So as I mentioned before, there is an access easement for orientation. This is Patterson Avenue. This is the entrance, the existing entrance on to the site where Tucker Ho Pines accesses their, their property. The self-storage facility will utilize this access easement that cuts across the subject property and leads to the Goochland County Pump Station, which is located just off the screen. The existing entrance to the property, which is the western entrance I pointed at, is a right-in, right-out-only intersection. However, as it was constructed, there is a gap in the intersection that allows for illegal left-turn lanes, so oftentimes people cut through where, you know, there is some infrastructure there, but it doesn't adequately block people from actually taking an illegal turn left. The applicant has proffered to improve this intersection by enlarging the Channelization Island, which is kind of like that big pork chop that sits in the middle of those intersections, to prevent left-turn lanes onto Patterson Avenue. The applicant is also proposing a new access to the site. This will also be a right-in, right-out entrance. This is the one shown on the eastern portion of the conceptual plan. There is, there is an, also on the property. So this property has already been developed and improved for the Tucker Ho Pines facility. There is a 50-foot existing vegetated buffer already there that will be retained. In addition to the two applications before you this evening, this proposed development is also regulated by the River Road Entrance Corridor and Overlay District. Although the applicant has provided the elevations that are shown on the screen as to what the buildings may look like when they are constructed, these are not proffered, nor are they conditioned with either one of these applications before you this evening. The overlay district requires certificate, a certificate of approval, or a COA, which is a separate application and a separate process to determine the details of design of the parcels, the materials for the building. A COA would be required to be approved before the plan of development is approved. So this map shows that the, the building in the middle is Tucker Ho Pines. The proposed mini warehouse is on the eastern portion of the screen. So what this shows is that the floodplain has, it encumbers a good portion of the property. The green, the red, and then the blue are all different designations. The green is the floodway. These are all FEMA designations. The red is the 100-year floodplain. Both the floodplain and the 100-year floodplain do have some regulations. The blue, which is the 500-year floodplain, does not have any code restrictions to it. So the applicant, so staff is recommending a condition to notify anybody who may lease a storage unit that is within those blue areas, be notified about the potential impact if there's a flood. So the applicant has provided a traffic impact analysis, which indicated that there are no improvements required by traffic generation of this project. VDOT concurred with these findings and has also issued an access management exception to allow for a reduction of the taper at the new eastern entrance. As I mentioned in a previous slide, the applicant has also agreed to improve the existing western entrance, which is a right-in, right-out with the elongated Channelization Island. The existing road to the subject property also shared, also shares access to the pump station. Staff is proposing a condition to secure continued access to the county-owned property during the construction of the mini warehouse facility. So since the Planning Commission recommended this with the 5-0 to all, the conditions that are being referenced, it has come to the attention of staff that Tucker Ho Pines Retirement Community has placed signs along this access easement that leads to the Goochland County Pump Station. The, the signs say that this area is now available for additional parking for the Tucker Ho facility, Tucker Ho Pines facility. It should be noted that for safety concerns for both passengers and increased potential of property damage, the easement is only 30 feet wide and has a proposed 20-foot pavement that the applicant has committed to. It does not meet the minimum standards for parking. The Department of Public Utilities operate 24 hours a day, so they have constant staffing. Employees use trucks to haul maintenance equipment to include a mini excavator, their daily tankers that enter the property with chemicals that treat the wastewater treatment, and as, there's also a dumpster that requires trash removal. So because of all these things, staff is recommending to add a condition requiring the applicant to place no parking signs along the portion of the access easement that the county uses for the pump station. The subject property is designated as commercial in the comprehensive plan, which is defined generally as retail, retail services, office and office warehouse uses. Additional uses such as churches, hospitals, and nursing homes may be acceptable when compatible with surrounding and existing uses. As conditioned, the proposal is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. There was a community meeting held on June 25, 2025. No members of the public attended. Board of Supervisors Chairman, Mr. Winfrey, Supervisor Lyle, and Planning Commissioner Patack were in attendance. There was discussion about the general business plan for the development to include capacity, security, and procedures. There were also questions about traffic and turn lanes. For the Planning Commission, at their, at their October 16, 2025 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of both the proffer amendment and conditional use permit applications with a 5-0 vote. One resident from Tucker Ho Pines spoke in support of the applicating, application noting concerns with construction dust and the current access to Tucker Ho Pines. The access concerns were addressed by the applicant and their representative. The access concerns were addressed by the applicant and their representative. So, the following is a summary of conditions proffered by the applicant to amend the application RZ 2020, which is application RZ 2025 00005. Ms. McGee is probably going to be checking me on this one. But the, a complete set of the proffers are in the agenda packet starting on page 159. And based on the, the number I gave, it's probably consistent with the Planning Commission. But again, nothing has changed other than the recommended condition for the, for the no parking signs, which are, a copy of that has been placed on the dais for each of you.
Actually, I think you got the right page, but you misspoke and said 159, it's 149.
Sorry, thank you.
Hey, it takes a team. That's all it is. It's just a team.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go through the proffers very in a summary form. Proffer 1 requires the business to hook up to public water and sewer use, and sewer. Proffer 2 adds the use of self-storage use to the already-approved uses that include office buildings, accessory retail and services, public utilities, and assisted living facilities. Proffer 3 contains two exterior materials for office buildings and Tuckahoe Pines. The included materials have already been used on Tuckahoe Pines. As I had mentioned in the presentation, this particular building will have to go through the certificate of approval application. Looking at these materials, they are consistent with what is required in, in that district. Proffer number 4 requires a minimum building setback of 150 feet and a 75-foot setback for parking from Route 6. Proffer number 5 requires a minimum 50-foot buffer be provided along Route 6. And as I had mentioned, this has already been established and will be maintained. Proffer number 6 requires all utilities to be underground. Proffer number 7 limits two points of access on to Route 6. Proffer 8 states that any detached sign will be monument-style. Proffer 9 provides an updated conceptual plan showing both the Tuckahoe Pines as well as the proposed four-building self-storage unit, which is Exhibit A. I showed it during my presentation. Proffer 10 states an easement shall be granted to the county for a walking trail within the undeveloped portion of the floodplain. This was adopted with the original zoning case and has been retained. And lastly, proffer 11 is a commitment to improve the existing entrance by extending the Channelization Island to the property to, and construct a new entrance at the westbound taper as approved by VDOT, shown on the conceptual plan. So that covers the proffer amendment. The following are the conditions for this request that have been approved, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, with the exception of the addition that staff has added of number 17. The following is a summary of the recommended conditions. And again, I had mentioned, I had placed the conditions in front of you. They weren't the proffered conditions. They were the imposed conditions. Condition number 1 allows for self-storage facility on the property. Condition number 2 requires improvements to generally conform to conceptual plan, which was presented to you as Exhibit A. Condition 3 states, states the use may not begin until after the plan of development has been approved, and all improvement have been installed along Patterson Avenue for the Patterson Avenue improvements. Condition 4 prohibits storing of hazardous or flammable materials, perishable goods, on the facility, in the facility. Condition number 5 states that no outside storage is permitted, including recreational vehicles, boats, or other watercraft. Trailers, vehicles, and shipping containers are all prohibited. Condition number 6 prohibits business activity other than the rental of storage units and sales of related supplies like tape and box, boxes, things along those lines. Excuse me. Condition number 7 requires bay doors to be closed other than for loading and unloading, and that no bay doors may be visible from Patterson Avenue. Condition 8 allows one detached ground-mounted sign for the self-storage facility, and the sign is not to be lit internally. Condition 9 prohibits noise from any outdoor speakers beyond the property line. Condition 10 prohibits development within the floodway and 100-year floodplain, and that any leasable units developed within the 500-year floodplain be designated and included in language and leasing contracts acknowledging the identified risk hazard, potential risk hazard. Proffer 11 limits the office hours to 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays, and that leaseholders are permitted to have access after regular office hours. Continuing with the conditions. Condition 12 states there will be no building on the property to exceed three stories in height. Number 13 requires nine acres, as demonstrated in Exhibit B, subject to a conditional use permit be subdivided prior to the plan of development approval. Condition 14 requires a construction plan be established to ensure continued access to county-owned properties during the construction. This condition also requires the applicant to pave the access easement. Condition 15 is the county standard CUP transfer or lease condition requiring the county to be notified prior to the transfer or lease of the property to a different person or just a different entity. Number 16 limits the construction hours to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. There are exceptions that can be granted administratively for emergency purposes. That's correct. So, staff is recommending a new condition based on the parking that is occurring on the access easement. The, the condition reads, no parking on access easement. Parking on or along the access easement that leads to the eastern Goochlin Pump Station is prohibited. No parking signs must be installed every 200 feet on both sides along the length of the easement or as required by the fire department. The signs must be installed within 30 days of approval of this conditional use permit.
And you're going to modify that one now?
I believe I've had a conversation with the applicant, and I believe he is going to be requesting some modifications, of course. Staff would be happy to weigh in, but I think he's got something in mind. We were, it happened so last minute, we were unable to come up with it. Am I answering your question, Tara?
Yeah, I thought you little guys had already agreed to the language change.
For the record, gentlemen, the applicant is aware that staff would be requesting or the board would potentially would be imposing this, the no parking signs. He did not have any concerns with that. He does have some concerns with the length of installation based on his clients, when they will be actually owning the property to be able to do so. So, he's going to come up and explain that as well. But, as I mentioned before, there is one public hearing you can hold, and each one must have a separate vote. I'm available for questions. Mr. Conlon is here for the applicant, and he also has a presentation. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I, I just wanted to get, be clear that the first one listed here is a rezoning. And the second one is a conditional use permit?
Yes, sir. The, the first application is based on an amended 1989 case. So, there are proffers already on that case. This is an amendment to add the use of...
Amendment to the zoning, okay.
Yeah, to, to the, the, it's a proffer amendment, and yes, the, the second is a conditional use permit.
Two separate ones.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, board? And the applicant is here, represented?
Oh, of course.
Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Sherry is doing the transfer there, I don't know if I would be able to ask her a question, which, do we have an estimate at what the economic contribution of this would be going from vacant land to business?
I happen to have someone who may have that answer, as she is also wearing two hats. Ms. Sarah Worley may have that answer as far as, I, I know certain things about it, but she might be able to give a better answer.
Good evening, gentlemen. For the record, I'm Sarah Worley, the acting Economic Development Director at the moment. I do not have an exact answer for you, but it will increase the commercial tax base on real estate. There are no machinery and tools and limited business personal property tax.
But we will be increasing our tax base.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Andy Conlon from Roth Jackson here representing the applicant, Graham Real Estate. And thank you to Ms. Sherry for the presentation, which really covered a lot of what I was going to talk about. First thing is that with respect to the rezoning, Mr. Winfrey, some of the items that we're asking for are related to the self-storage, but also related to cleaning up some of the language, including limiting it to homes for the aged, which are no longer permitted in the, or no longer enumerated in the county ordinance. So, we're updating some of the language that we had provided. And some things that were in the proffers were already required by the ordinance itself. So, we've taken a lot of those things out as well to really update them and clean them up. And, Mr. Lyle, the value of the property upon completion, from a construction standpoint, is intended, intended to be about $10 million is the estimate at this point for all the improvements that we've placed on the property itself. So, a couple of things, just to clarify, and again, Ms. Sherry, you covered a lot of the points that I wanted to provide for. But the eastern access that is provided on the right side, that's the right-in, right-out at that location, has already been approved by VDOT. It's anticipated that we will be using that for our construction access, so we don't have any. And of course, that'll be verified through the POD process and through the construction plan process with the county to ensure that that would be done appropriately in the timing, so that we don't conflict with the traffic that's existing through the continuing traffic through Tuckahoe Pines. With respect to the westernmost existing access that's provided for Tuckahoe Pines, that's a right-in, right-out, but it's also a left-in. I just wanted to clarify that from a Patterson Avenue standpoint. I think the next slide will tell you exactly what's going on today. What the problem is, it's what we call, it's called a pork chop, but it's not quite to the standards and requirements of VDOT. It's what we're proposing, as you can see, there's a line there that shows that people are coming up, and there's really not a lot of prohibition from them to illegally turn left. It's not keeping them from doing it, and people are able to and are doing it and making that left-hand turn. So, what we're proposing and that provided for in the proffered conditions, extending that 20 feet so that forcing people, that Channelization, forcing people to go right and not able to make that left-hand turn. Of course, we have provided for, we'll be providing for mutual access between Tuckahoe Pines and our property as well, so folks can continue to take a left turn and then turn right into our facility, the driveway into our facility. That existing driveway that's serving the county currently is a gravel road, will be paved, so it'll be improved by our property itself and through our, our proposal. We don't have any problem at all with the idea of the parking and the access. This is a new thing that came up. I know that the, there's probably a little bit of a confusion on that respect in the, from the property itself. They're providing for overflow parking. There's a small parking spot or parking area that's off of the access easement, but the signs themselves say overflow parking, not with an arrow or anything, just seems to show it on there. So, we don't have any problem at all with the idea that, the point on the condition that has been proposed with condition number 17, just as a point of clarification, when it says that we're to put the no parking signs along the length of the easement, that would be the length of the easement upon our property. We're not putting it further beyond our property. I think that's pretty clear. Clear. I don't need to clarify that. But what we're concerned about is, one, if this gets approved tonight, which we hope it will, 30 days from now, we've got a couple of major holidays. It's hard to get anything done in 30 days to get signs up. We actually don't own the property. My client doesn't own it at this point. So, what I would propose, I've written it out in my hand scratch that maybe I can hand it to the county attorney as well, but really proposing the earlier of 30 days from the plan of development approval, which I understand a concern being what if you never get that approved? Or six months from the date of tonight, if this gets approved tonight. So, it'll be put up within six months at the latest, but we think we can move things along pretty quickly. We'll talk to the property owner, that's the Tuckahoe Pines, to get rid of the overflow parking signs to take, get control of that itself. But until we can control the property, I, I didn't want to commit to say we're going to do it within 30 days. So, I'd like to have that to be the earlier of 30 days of approval of, 30 days from approval of the plan of development or six months, whichever occurs first from the date of this approval. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I had a full, long, extended presentation, but I know better would be in the last case to go through the whole thing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time and ask for your approval. And we're accepting of all the conditions that are on the CUP.
Any questions? Go further questions? Thank you, Mr. Conlon.
Mr. Chairman, the pork chop of some interest, would that be the first improvement that would be made? Or how would that, what's the timing on that?
Yeah, that would be as part of our, it would be the timing with respect to the construction of our development as well. Obviously, that can be done. We'd have to do it in conjunction with the same time as the, the right-in, right-out, the new access, because that would be intended to be the construction access. We would do those, you know, work with the county to make sure those, VDOT, to make sure those are done simultaneously. And those would be the first things that would be done.
All right. And, and I believe from earlier conversations, people still would be able to use your access road, go down to that new entrance and take a right if, for whatever reason, they did not want to take a right from that exit.
They could, and they could come up this way and then...
I understand the visibility might be a little better there.
That's right. I think that's been part of the issue, being that left-turn movement at this entrance is a little difficult, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just, yes.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question of Ms. McGee. For purposes of smoothly doing this, it looks like if we took Point 17 and just said the signs must be installed within 180 days of approval of this conditional use permit or 30 days from approval of the plan of development, whichever comes sooner, we would be, that would suffice, correct?
Yes, sir. I wrote the similar thing down.
So, when we, when the motion is made, we would say, as amended, as amended, and then would we read Point 17?
As you and I just went back and forth.
Yes, yes, we would read the modified Point 17.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all clear on how we need to go about it.
Staff has not provided their feedback on that timing, and I'm sure they will provide that feedback.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to just continue the idea of simplification, if we just said 30 days of the approval of the plan of development, that kind of means once they got a plan of development approved, they got 30 days.
Mr. Conlon was graciously offering an earlier timeframe. And a plan of development can take numerous months to get finally approved. So, his other offer is in as little as six months.
I'm, I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Yes, Ms. McGee, members of the board. This is something that was brought to my attention by the Department of Public Utilities yesterday, so it is an ongoing current problem. I did hear Mr. Conlon say that he was going to talk to the property owner. We also are talking to the property owner to have those removed. So, hopefully, that will abate the immediate concern, which is why we put that 30 days. But after Mr. Conlon explained that they would not even have ownership at that point, you know, it kind of eased our concern a bit on that. But it, six, six months is still a little bit of a long time, and, but I appreciate of, of that being in there, because sometimes they don't ever get approved and developments go away. So, it would be an opportunity.
You're okay with that? As I understand it, it'd just be part of the motion, not, not as an amendment.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would, I would only add that the county has an easement today, and I think they control, personally, not being, representing the landowner or the county, but I think you could enforce no parking on an access easement that you need for approval to get to your property. So, that's separate and apart from everything we're talking about as part of the condition. So, I think that could occur earlier, so.
I do have one other question, Ms. Sherry. Do we have, who, who would be responsible for enforcement?
So, that would be my office. We have already written a courtesy letter, so to kind of simplify this, any kind of development or any kind of regulation that is added to a property would be part of the plan of development. Those were not approved when the Tuckahoe Pines facility was, was approved. It doesn't meet the standards, so we have already issued a courtesy letter. If it has not gone out today, it will go out first thing in the morning. So, it would be us. I, I think in conversations with the, with the property owner, we will get there. Hopefully, no legal enforcement will... Hopefully, no legal enforcement will have to occur, but with the sign being up, it does, you know, once people get into a habit, they'll do it. If a no parking sign is there, it'll be a reminder every time they try and do it. That's why it's important.
Yeah, in terms of enforcing the no parking sign, that may end up being the fire marshal, yeah, the fire marshal enforces those.
It's an enforcement issue, which our action tonight will reinforce the enforcement, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
We really don't need to, because we could enforce it now, is that correct?
Chief?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
So, Mr. Chairman, potentially we could, but looking at the new plan, the rezoning and so forth, and the new road and serving a business as well as a critical infrastructure of Goochlin County that supports many citizens, we want to make sure that roadway is always open. The roadway is not being built to the standard that would allow for parking on either side of the roadway. It would have to be greater than thirty-two feet according to the Virginia statewide fire prevention code wide in order to be able to park on both sides, and then the county has, has an ordinance that would require potentially three or four more feet. So from our standpoint, we would, we would recommend that we would just put no parking fire lane signs there, and we could handle immediate enforcement of that to make sure that, you know, there is a mechanism there to enforce that, that fire lane. And the only other thing that I would say is what's being proffered to the channelization island. We respond to Tuckahoe Pines very often. They require services often, frequent responses, and we have large ladder trucks and fire engines, and so we would have to do that in a way that we could make those turns, and there are things that can be done to that from the standpoint of some rollover curb edges and things of that sort that we've done in other places. So if that ladder truck comes in there and turns and it's tight, then we can drive up over that, that concrete island, and so we would need to think about that. The other thing that I noticed, and this just could be my ignorance or not knowing, is that both seem to carry the address of twelve-three-thirty Patterson Avenue.
You want to get that separated?
Yeah, absolutely, because, you know, we're in Tuckahoe Pines sometime, somewhere between, you know, twelve and twenty times a month for different types of emergencies, so we would need a clear distinction between that facility as well as what's being proposed. And obviously, the pump station could also have an emergency, and so we need, that needs to be cleared up, so. But I'm sure that's just a normal process that occurs further down the road when the plan of development is submitted. It's probably way premature to bring it up, but I saw it, I wanted to mention it since I'm here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Oh, yes.
May I, Mr. Chairman? I was just going to clarify that addresses are issued when we receive a building permit, but just to let you know, we have kind of gotten ahead of that. I've met with various staff to kind of figure out how we're going to make the distinction of all the properties that are back there.
Address, okay. Nothing further from the applicant or the presentation. Let's open it up for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Victor Hines. I'm a resident of Tuckahoe Pines at twelve-three-thirty Patterson Avenue. From my point of view, architecturally, this thing looks nice. It's not going to produce a lot of traffic, a lot of noise, so from my speaking to other residents, most of them think it would be, it would be fine. My big concern is, you all have no idea how dangerous having that median be no left turn. You need to get with DOT. You're making it, right now, we have to, all these old people have to turn their head a hundred and eighty degrees to see what's coming, and it is, there are some people that break the rules and turn right. If it's a real dangerous intersection, then maybe Rivergate shouldn't be allowed to turn left. But I would ask that you, ask to modify it so that we don't have that median there. We can, it's much easier to look ninety degrees and see what's coming than it is a hundred and eighty degrees. And the other thing, I'm very aware of what the tanker trucks that come into that facility quite regularly, and they're eighteen-wheelers, and they have a difficulty, they can't get out, I don't know how the fire trucks would do it, but they can't get out of that exit, so they have to drive out the entrance, which is very dangerous. I'm not saying they turn left, they turn, they turn, you know, they turn right, but they can't go over that median. So that's a very dangerous situation, and if you could get with DOT, I think it would make it a much safer intersection if people, if you didn't have that big beefed-up median and you were allowed to turn left, because right now, you got people that, I mean, I've got so many surgeries in my back, I can hardly turn ninety degrees, much less a hundred and eighty, so that's all I would ask. Other than that, I think it'll be a nice use and except for some construction noise and dust, other than that, should be fine. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? If not, I'll close the public comment period. All right, board, back to us. Any discussion, and we have a motion? We need two motions?
I can make a motion. I want to do this slowly and make sure, whoops, since we're going to have two votes, we'll start with the rezoning, and, Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve proffer amendment RZ twenty-twenty-five, five, application by Graham Real Estate LLC, subject to the imposed conditions as presented.
Do we have a second?
Does that not need the Point Seventeen?
No, sir, that's in the CUP, the second motion.
Okay, now, any further discussion? We're sure we're clear on this? Okay, all in favor?
Going to do a roll call? Oh, Mr. Bo, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Sherry or the, Mr. Conlon, so can you pull up this, go back a couple slides to the overhead that shows that would include Patterson Avenue? There, back one more. That, that's perfect. So has there been the thought of potentially signalizing the intersection coming out of Tuckahoe Pines there in the middle where we're proposing that pork chop?
So it's my understanding that the traffic counts would not support, in order to get a signal, it would have to be able to meet VDOT standards. As you know, the one on Broad Street Road took a very long time, so I don't think it's been an active discussion, that's something that we can definitely look into.
Okay, but I kind of feel like we've had that conversation. It's kind of a leading question.
Exactly, we have had the conversation, but it has gone nowhere because it does not meet the justification for it.
So let me ask you this, so if I'm looking at this, and bear with me, but if I'm, if I'm in a situation as gentlemen indicated, what would prohibit me from turning left to go in front of the new storage facility, making a left, or I'm sorry, a right out of there? So, go back.
So, so why couldn't I come out? If I need to go left, I'd come out here and then turn here to make the left turn back out there?
Yes, there, I don't believe there's anything.
So that's actually an improvement to what we currently have.
Based on how wide that access road is, I don't think the eighteen-wheelers could make the turn into that road.
Well, I'm, I feel like during the plan of development, Chief Ferguson's comments will be from the curbing, I think we'll be able to address it and be sure that. I'm thinking about for the residents of that facility, this actually, at least from my perspective, gives them another option to be able to head the wrong way, which is east instead of coming out west to the other stuff in Goochlin, just saying.
Thank you. That has been part of our discussion. I have had some conversation with Elizabeth McDonald, who is our Director of Public Utilities. They did indicate that a majority of their entering and exiting would occur here, so I guess they would, you know, pretty much take advantage of the same thing without that channelization.
So that access, the new access will accommodate the?
I do believe so. I know that there is not, excuse me, the pork chop that is there, so that there should be no need to have to go out the wrong way.
Okay, so I think we've got a motion, a second. Want to do a roll call, Dr. Rayly?
Sure. Mr. Lyle?
Yay.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Spoonhour?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
All right, well, we've gotten ourselves to a point where, oh, oh, we got to do the second one, that's true, okay. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve as amended, and I move that the board grant conditional use permit CU twenty-twenty-five-four, application by Graham Real Estate LLC, subject to the imposed conditions with the following amendments. And that would be, I'm going to call it Condition Seventeen, no parking on access easement, parking on or along the access easement that leads to the eastern Goochlin Pump Station is prohibited. No parking signs must be installed every two hundred feet on both sides along the length of the easement or as required by the fire department. The signs must be installed the earlier of thirty days of approval of the plan of development or within one hundred and eighty days of approval of this conditional permit.
All right.
Second?
Got a second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Lyle?
Yay.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Spoonhour?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Winfrey?
Yes. Now, nothing further for the good of the cause, the Board of Supervisors will now adjourn as follows, till Monday, December eighth, two p.m., for our capital improvement plan work session in Conference Room Two Seventy in this building. The meeting is open to the public. And Tuesday, January sixth, afternoon organizational business meeting, and then at six o'clock p.m., public hearings, board meeting room Two Fifty, right here in this room. The meeting is also open to the public. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.